Olive White County School Board is in session. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Colick.
Present.
Mr. Cunningham.
Present.
Mrs. Perkins.
Here.
Mr. Wooster.
Present.
And Mr. Marsh.
Here. All right. Mr. Wooster.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda for closed session as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Colick.
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham.
Yes.
Mrs. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Wooster.
Yes.
And Mr. Marsh.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda for open session as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Colick.
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham.
Yes.
Mrs. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Wooster.
Yes.
And Mr. Marsh.
Yes, motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I move to go into closed session to review the personnel report posted on board docs under Personnel tab number 17.1 as authorized by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1 for purposes of discussion and consideration of prospective candidates of Olive White Public Schools for employment, contract changes, transfers, salary adjustments, supplemental contracts, deletions, supplemental pay, resignations of Olive White County Public Schools employees, and to discuss a matter involving four religious exemption students that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning students as authorized by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A2, and to discuss and consider one student matter as authorized by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A2 for purposes of discussion or consideration of disciplinary matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in scholastic records concerning an Olive White County Public School student.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Colick.
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham.
Yes.
Mrs. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Wooster.
Yes.
And Mr. Marsh.
Yes, motion passes. And Madam Clerk, do we have anyone sign up to speak in closed session?
No, sir.
Okay. Am I missing anything?
Nope.
Closed session.
Isle of Wight County School Board is in session.
Lower to you, sir.
Mr. Chair, I move that the closed meeting was conducted in conformity with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as required by Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, and certify that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second. With a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing known, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Collett?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mrs. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Wooster?
Yes.
And Mr. Marsh.
Yes, motion passes. Mr. Wooster?
Would everyone please stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Mr. Wooster. Good evening. It is September 11th, 2025, Patriot Day. We are located in Westside Elementary School for our regular monthly meeting. We'll kick it right off into Isle of Wight Achievers, Mrs. Briggs.
We have, with the new year, we have a new procedure. We're going to roll out for Isle of Wight Achievers, and what I'm going to ask at this time is if our members of the board and our student liaisons would come down to the backdrop, Dr. Kramer as well, Superintendent, and when we recognize our students, we're actually going to have you stand behind me facing the audience, and then after we have called up your entire group or finished recognizing you, you will come over here to the backdrop, shake the hands of the board members and representatives up here, Dr. Kramer and our student representatives, and then we'll get a group picture or individual picture with all of our representatives. So that's a great way that they can personally congratulate you for your accomplishments that you're being recognized for tonight. So we are going to start with Smithfield High School, and Ms. Getz is going to hand out pins for those people being recognized, they already have their certificates. So Colin, you get to start us off. Smithville High School 9th grader Colin Stevenson has been selected as a STEM Student Ambassador with the National Institute of Aerospace's Center for Integrative STEM Education for the 2526 academic year. Colin was chosen in June from a highly competitive pool of regional high school students for this prestigious role. As a STEM Student Ambassador, Colin will work to promote STEM fluency and competency across the region, sharing engaging career line content for audiences of all ages and contributing to the development of an inclusive and collaborative STEM community. To prepare for his responsibilities, Colin successfully completed a rigorous hybrid training program this summer. The program included an introductory webinar on July 16th, an in-person training held July 21st through the 24th, and a series of independent workplace readiness modules developed by the Virginia Tech Work-Based Learning Programs. While Colin is the youngest STEM Student Ambassador selected this year, his mentors at NIA CISE praised his professionalism, adaptability, and strong leadership skills. He played an instrumental role in planning and presenting a STEM outreach event on July 23rd, which brought together scientists, engineers, and NIA staff. His ability to motivate peers and communicate science effectively stood out as hallmarks of his participation. Congratulations to you, Colin, and we'll have you come over here and just run down the row, shake hands, please. And in true tradition, Mr. David Elliott will organize everybody so we can get a wonderful There you go. Way to improvise. And if there's any family here that wants a photo, this is a good time. Ms. Stevenson? And Ms. Stevenson is one of our PE teachers at Smithville Middle School this year after spending many years at Windsor Elementary. So glad to have you here. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations, Colin. Okay. Next, we have some national Beta winners, and what we're going to do, since we have some from several schools, we're going to call all of you up, we're not just going to do it one school at a time. So we'll get all of you up, and then we'll get a picture of all of the national Beta winners with our representatives over here. So national Beta members from Isle of Wight County Schools earned accolades for their exceptional accomplishments at the 25 National, 2025 National Beta Convention in Orlando this summer. Starting off, Windsor Elementary's Camden Seward impressed judges with his woodworking skills. Come on, Camden. And he placed fifth at Nationals for his entry. Sponsors for Windsor Elementary include Ms. Stevenson, Ms. Bradshaw, and Ms. White, so please come up and join Camden. And while you're doing that, we're going to go on to Westside. Westside also had a standout presence at the National Beta Convention. Riley Jocelyn earned a 10th place award in 5th grade creative writing, while, yeah. While Max Christiansen matched that finish in 5th grade social studies. Max joined teammates Ivy Cole, Rajah Flaherty Cross, and Annie Kate Hickerson in the convention invention category where their collaboration led to a 6th place ranking. And Ori Brown, now at Smithville Middle, but as a student at Westside, shined in 6th grade science, earning a 3rd place award. And we invite the Westside sponsors to join them, Ms. Wildy, Ms. Hilliard, if they are here, and Ms. Wildy is. Riley Lawrence, a freshman at Windsor High who represented Georgie Tyler Middle School, was recognized for his strong showing in 8th grade science where he finished 9th overall. I'm not sure if Riley is with us tonight. The Beta Club sponsors are Ms. Griffith, Ms. Parsons, Ms. Rickman, and Ms. Bachman. And Smithville High also had some representation. Carter Hickerson, who represented Smithville Middle, excuse me, secured a top 10 finish in US history, earning 10th place for his efforts. And I'm not sure if he's here yet. Dylan Fusen? Has he made it? Okay. He's coming, but he's going to be running late from Governor's School for the Arts, and I'll explain- And I'll explain to you why he's at Governor's School for the Arts as a ninth grader. He captured first place in the junior performing arts solo duo trio category with a powerful piano performance of Beethoven's Moonlight Sonata, third movement, in case you're wondering. Third movement. So as soon as Dylan's here, we're going to scoot him back up here to recognize him because that's pretty cool. So these honors followed their success at the Virginia State Beta Convention where they first qualified to compete at the national level. The convention drew thousands of Beta members from across the country, and this year's event welcomed over 3,000 elementary students, 5,100 junior students, junior level students, and 6,900 senior students, making it the largest national convention gathering in national Beta history. And we congratulate you guys for bringing home the bling. Congratulations. So come on over here. We'll have you move through the line, shake everybody's hands. There you go. And then Mr. Elliott is going to get you guys all coordinated for a photo. Is that Dylan? Is that Dylan? Dylan! Come on up, Dylan. And ladies and gentlemen, that's Dylan, who rushed here from Governor's School for the Arts. Yay! Yes. We got any parents? Photos for parents? Yep. All right, parents are snapping photos. We all good? Oh, one more, sorry. You can come up closer? Come on. Oh, come on, it's all good. It's a wonderful occasion. You're welcome. Congratulations. Well done. All right. You are dismissed. Thank you. I thought that went well. We're done. I got to do introductions now. So, Mr. Chair, although this is not Isle of Wight Achievers, I would like to introduce some new administrators that we have onboard, either new to Isle of Wight County Schools or in new roles for the year. They are in the audience, and I've asked them to please stand when I call their name and to stay standing while I read to you some information about them. So we are going to first start with Lori White. So Lori? Yay. Lori joined the division in March as Director of Secondary Education. She's been with us for a few months. She holds a master's degree in special education from Regent University and is a two-time graduate of the University of Virginia, earning a bachelor's degree in psychology and an educational specialist degree in educational administration. White served in her hometown with Suffolk Public Schools for 22 years as a special education teacher, compliance specialist, and data specialist, as well as an assistant principal and principal at both the elementary and secondary levels. She most recently was the principal of Lakeland High School. White resides in Suffolk with her husband and twin daughters. Actually, they are now freshmen at Longwood University, so she's empty nesting at the moment. But we are delighted to have Lori White with us. Thank you. With nearly 30 years in public education, we welcome Tanika Thornton as the new assistant principal at Hardy Elementary School. I know she's back there. Her extensive background includes roles as a teacher, instructional specialist, excuse me, principal, and most recently, lead assistant principal at Franklin High School. She holds advanced degrees in educational leadership and urban education, as well as multiple Virginia licenses. And we are delighted to have Ms. Thornton with us. Yay! Next is Sarah Bachman. Sarah, who is a proud graduate of Isle of Wight County Schools, is the new assistant principal at Georgie D. Tyler Middle School. Over the past 12 years, Sarah has served the division in various roles, including teacher, administrative aide, and most recently instructional coach at Georgie Tyler Middle School. She holds advanced degrees in educational leadership, teaching, and psychology, along with Virginia licensure in administration and supervision, pre-K 12, and elementary education, pre-K through six. And we congratulate you, Sarah, on your new role. Also, a graduate from our school division, we have Mr. Matt Summitt, who is the new assistant principal at Smithville Middle School. He previously, yeah, go ahead and applaud, that's good. He previously served as assistant principal at Hardy Elementary. Prior to his administrative role, he taught music at Carrollton Elementary and served as a teacher at an Achievable Dream Academy in Newport News. Mr. Summitt also served four years in the United States Navy before pursuing his passion for education. He holds a Bachelor of Music in Jazz Studies from Christopher Newport University and a Bachelor of Arts in US History from Arizona State University. He later earned a Master of Education in Educational Leadership and Policy Studies from Virginia Tech. Congratulations on your new role, Mr. Summitt. And we have another Navy veteran with us. In support of our continued commitment to strong fiscal stewardship, the division welcomed Connie Edens as an accountant within the Finance Department. I think Ms. Devery is... Have you seen Ms. Devery smile that big? There we go. Ms. Edens brings over 17 years of experience in financial management, having served as a senior accountant and cost analyst in both government and private sectors. She has led accounting teams, managed complex financial reports, conducted audits, and overseen budget development and grant reporting. Ms. Edens holds a master's degree in business administration with a concentration in accounting from St. Leo University. And she spent 20 years in the Navy and retired as a, oh, I got interrupted, first class? Electronics technician. Sorry, I got distracted. And we welcome Ms. Edens. And with that, yes, congratulations to all. Thank you very much.
May I make a comment, Mr. Chair? These are some really talented individuals. We're very fortunate to have them all, so please, another well-deserved round of applause for our new staff members. Thank you.
And it's apparent that the Navy's running deep in Isle of Wight County Schools. All right. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers this evening?
Yes, sir.
Over to you, dear.
In accordance to policy BDDH-E, presentation of information on any subject will be concluded at the discretion of the board. No person will be recognized to speak more than once. Citizens scheduled on the agenda to speak will be permitted four minutes maximum time for their presentation. Delegations will be requested to limit their speakers to two. Persons speaking are asked to be specific. State the issues for the board's consideration and attach a copy of your prepared remarks. If you have prepared remarks, they should be given to the board clerk. Please do not approach the board members. Any matter relating to specific students will be heard by the school board only in a closed meeting. And first, we have Ms. Lydia Schaefer.
Hi. Good? Good evening. My name is Lydia Schaefer, and I'm the parent of a Carrollton Elementary student. I want to begin by thanking you all, as well as law enforcement and staff, for the way the situation at Carrollton Elementary was handled in June when a threat was called in. I will never forget the fear I felt as a parent that day, but I also remember how quickly and professionally it was resolved, and I'm so grateful for that. I'm also thankful that Isle of Wight has an SRO in every school. This gives parents like me tremendous peace of mind and shows real commitment to safety. But at the same time, I have to ask, why do our elementary schools not yet have the same level of weapons detection devices as our middle and high schools? We already know these devices work. In June, at Smithfield High, a student was stopped for bringing a gun into school because of the detectors. And only weeks before that, during the second grade concert at Carrollton Elementary, a parent was charged with bringing a firearm into the building. That reality is terrifying, and it proves that being buzzed in at the front door is not enough. Threats can come from both outside and inside. I've also heard from parents and staff who say the detectors at the high school are not being used consistently. Students who arrive late walk in without scanning, visitors and delivery drivers come and go unchecked, and certain programs bypass the detectors altogether. These gaps leave dangerous openings that undermine the very reason the equipment is there. And this is not just a local issue, it's a nationwide crisis. As we all know, just down the road in Newport News, a teacher was shot by her own first grader. Only after that tragedy were detectors placed in every school. Suffolk has also acted. And just last week, two other Hampton Roads cities had students bring firearms onto school grounds. Yesterday, Evergreen High School in Colorado saw another shooting. And also yesterday, Charlie Kirk, someone I knew personally and worked with as an ambassador for Turning Point USA, was shot and killed on a school campus witnesses say didn't have detectors. These tragedies remind us that this problem is not going away. It is escalating, it is happening in the blink of an eye, and the question every leader must ask is, if something happens here, can you live knowing that more could have been done? I understand that there are challenges, funding, staffing, training, but I also know the goal has been stated clearly, detectors in every Isle of Wight school. If we agree on the goal, the only question is when? The FY 2026 budget shows this division is working with over $100 million. We've already secured $217,000 for Georgie Tyler Middle School through a state grant, proof that funding is out there. If we can do it for one school, we can do it for all, especially for our elementary schools where children are most vulnerable. Our youngest students are the least able to protect themselves. If we believe our high school and middle school students deserve this protection, surely our elementary children do as well. Today, fewer than 2% of elementary schools nationwide use metal detectors. That's not acceptable when we know that they work. I'm not here to simply point out a problem, I want to be part of the solution. This board should pursue every funding avenue, state and federal grants, public-private partnerships, even community fundraising. Parents like myself are ready to help. I'm also working at a broader level to push for more consistent state funding so safety doesn't depend on the county you live in. So tonight, I respectfully ask, can this board commit to a clear timeline for when detectors will be in place at every school, including our elementary schools? Because while we can debate budgets, staffing, and logistics, what we cannot debate is the value of a child's life. This is bigger than one parent speaking, this is about our community deciding what kind of example we want to set. Isle of Wight can wait, or Isle of Wight can lead. Thank you for your time and for your commitment to the safety of our children.
Greg Brown?
Good evening. To begin with, I'd just like to acknowledge that we have a very good school system here in Isle of Wight. We certainly have our challenges, but our status as one of the best systems in Hampton Roads is demonstrated by the excellent showing by our students at the National Beta Convention, as well as the recently released SOL scores. So thank you, Dr. Kramer, board, and the Board of Supervisors for the support in getting that done. That being said, there are still areas that we should be improving upon, and we are in constant competition with surrounding areas to attract and retain the skilled personnel we need to run our system. To address the second point first, there's a significant pay gap between the Isle of Wight pay scale and the pay scales of the neighboring school districts. I took a look at several of them, and at any level of experience I could find on the charts, a teacher could earn anywhere from $3,000 to nearly $8,000 more by moving from our school system to any of Newport News, Suffolk, or Hampton. And I didn't compare this, but just going by the discussion on the benefit package and healthcare at the budgeting, it doesn't sound like we're at the top of the heap in that area either. Additionally, I'd just like to point out that a couple of recent policy changes over the last couple of years, such as revisions to the controversial material policy, were adopted over the objections of teachers in Isle of Wight County, so we can't necessarily argue that teachers have the full trust and confidence of the school board. As far as areas of improvement go, transportation is going to be a constant need until we can clear the backlog of aging vehicles. I'd like to thank the school board and the Board of Supervisors for committing to buy another five school buses this year, but that is something we are going to need to keep doing every year until we can get the overall age of our fleet down to a reasonable level. Even this early in the school year, since I'm on Reminds at a couple of different schools now, I've seen multiple bus changes every day. And I know the Transportation Department is doing the best they can, but hopefully, we're achieving enough capacity with both operational buses and with bus drivers to handle day-to-day challenges without having to resort to doubling up buses or doing double back routes. That adds just huge amounts of time. I'd also like to mention that I've heard or read on social media several questions this year about the availability of transportation for students engaged in after-school activities. I think we are taking some steps to try to provide that, but I just wanted to let everybody know, like, that desire is out there for there to be a transportation option for kids engaged in after-school clubs or after-school sports, and if we can provide that, it will allow students to participate in those events that otherwise would not be able to. Like, even if you have a parent at home with multiple kids, it's hard to get to schools and pick kids up at the right times. So I know it's a lot to handle, I have confidence you all will work on it. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Mr. Ozil?
Well, 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 good evening, board members. Mike Ozil, heart of district. Hope all's been well since the last time I've been here with y'all. Hope you all had a good summer and things like that. And I'm gonna go with, I have, first of all, I'll say I've got a list of staff people that I want to meet at some point. I'm gonna hand this to Ms. Lian Briggs, but she seemed like she had left, so I'm gonna give it to Dr. Coleman there for me to talk with those people concerning some school issues. I don't know if y'all have noticed that, but Isle of Wight County has put together a commission with adults with disability. And I'm on that board there. We have representatives from every district besides the Carlsbyers District, so we're looking for anybody in Carlsbyers District to participate in that special ed, adult special ed, that Mr. Kramer has heard about this thing. Also, I have some flyers here that I, we just had printed out, and to give each one of y'all to give you a little summary of what's been taking place. And this will go as correspondence to the school special ed committee too as well, because we found out that once a student come out of school that has special needs, there's nothing out here for them to really participate in in the county. So we have put together a team to help try to solve that problem. And I will be contacting some of you on that issue, but hoping that we can get some of y'all to come to some of our meetings, just to see what we all about, get some input, even citizens out here as well. Because like I said, the program is fairly new, and we are trying to cover most of all the areas that we can cover for adults with disability, even the student with disability, because they work hand in hand. Because once this child come out of school and they have a challenge there, we want to be able to continue to helping that child through the services. Nevertheless, that's about all I got today, but like I said, I thank all of y'all for, you know, for doing what you're doing. And I want to, if I don't get a chance to welcome the newcomers one-on-one, I want to welcome all of your board, okay? And I thank you for your time.
That's it, Mr. Marsh.
Thank you, Mr. Ozil. It's good to see you, sir.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Mr. Brown, Mrs. Schaefer, I'd ask that you two not depart the pattern, or at least watch the recording later on, because I believe much of what most of you said will be discussed at some point this evening. All right, that takes us over to, and we're good to go there, Ms. Willow? Student liaisons. Cameron, ladies first.
Good afternoon, school board. We're just starting back with the new school year. On Tuesday, September 3rd, at Smithfield High School, students returned back for the 2025-2026 school year. With this return to school, we also saw the return of a number of different policies. We're continuing with our attendance policy from last year, which holds that should a student accumulate more than five excused or unexcused absences, they will forego their exemption from taking the exam for said course. Additionally, this year, SHS is continuing in their compliance with Governor Yonkin's Executive Order 33, or phone policy as we typically know it. Like last year, a first offense will warrant a warning from a teacher, a second offense and the student's device being held until the end of the day, a third and it being held until 3:00 PM, and only recoverable if the student's parent should come in and take it for it to be recovered, and then the fourth will result in a parent conference, and a fifth offense, if it should reach that level, would result, like last year, in the student being subject to additional disciplinary action, which there's no specific definition for that, but it's mostly interpreted to mean OSS or out-of-school suspension. In addition to this, we don't really have much trouble with either of these issues. Like with last year, there's not many students going against the phone policy, and our attendance policy seems to be working because we're not seeing a lot of absences or anything like that. Like with the return of last year's attendance policy and the continuation of our compliance with the phone policy, we're also seeing the return of our weapons detection systems from last year, introduced in March of 2025. These weapons detection systems were implemented at Smithfield High School and Windsor High School at Smithfield, with two of them being in the front of the building and the other two being in the back where the buses are, with them opening at 7:10 and then students entering the building, et cetera. The only issue that we're really seeing with these weapons detection systems is just, we've kind of fell back from where we were last year. We'd kind of hit a groove and everything was going smoothly, and there was less of a time gap for students getting to class because it was organized and there was a system to it, but now we're reaching a point where we've kind of gone backwards with the new freshmen coming in, and it takes a little longer because everyone's just hurdled, there's not really any two straight lines, and so I think that's an issue that will resolve itself with time, but that's really the only issue we're seeing. Aside from that, everything has been successful with us returning this school year, and there's really no issues and all is going well at Smithfield High School, so, yep.
Thanks, Cameron.
Thank you very, very much for that, Cameron. Very thorough explanation on the policies, nicely done. Regarding the weapons detection system and that process, I think some of that is to be expected at the very beginning of the school year. Certainly things that we're talking about and we'll be discussing a bit further this evening, so we'll continue to monitor that and make it certain that we're getting students in as efficiently as possible, but yes, I think you're right that first week, first week and a half of school, it's just going to take some time to work through some of the kinks. So, and again, we'll be talking more about some of the other efforts and initiatives we'll be putting in place to ensure that those systems are working and are being operated throughout the day as well. You didn't speak to that, Cole did the last time, so that's something that we will be addressing later this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Doc, anybody else? All right, Cole, you're up.
Thank you. Not to brag on Windsor and not to shame on Smithfield, but our weapons detection system is doing good, no problems, we're in and out, and we're getting to class before the tardy bell, so I think that's all good for Windsor. Good evening, everyone. Tonight may be a little bit longer, but I would like to make sure everyone is acknowledged for the hard work so far this year. First, I would like to thank the board again for selecting me to represent the Windsor Dukes, it is a true honor for me. Throughout almost two full weeks of school, the Dukes have come out strong. The Windsor football team is 2-0 and playing Middlesex tomorrow night. The Dukes volleyball team is also standing at 2-0 and are currently playing Appomattox at the Castle. The cross-country team took their opening district meet in a sweep, ranking as the first team overall for boys and third overall for girls. The reigning Class II champion Dukes golf team is 8-0 undefeated, and is still, I mean, excuse me, and is defending their title in September at Sleepy Hole Golf Course. Windsor High School's homecoming is scheduled for October 4th with yours truly on the homecoming court, and we are all excited to have a great time. At Windsor High's opening house, 24 backpacks filled with supplies for students were donated, so thank you all to who did that for our students and our community. Windsor Student Booster Club has worked very hard making theme nights for our football and volleyball games, so thanks to the Student Booster Club. I would also like to shout out teachers and students countywide who have worked so hard and continued working hard, improving test scores and excelling beyond testing standards. More specifically, IWS students outperformed the state by eight percentage points in mathematics, so congratulations to students and staff who worked hard for all of these results. The first two weeks of school have been successful and the Dukes are excited for the rest of the year. Thank you all for your time.
Thanks, Cole.
Thank you, Cole, and in Cameron's defense at Smithfield, they are a little bit larger than you all, so it's probably taken them a little bit more time, just a little bit. Nicely done as well, Cole, and congratulations to your Dukes, you guys are doing well. 2-0 the football team? Excellent, let's go for 3-0 this week. Thank you.
All right, we'll move right along. And as we progress through the agenda here, Cameron Cole, it's a school night, so when you get to a point where you're ready to pull it, get it up at your discretion, it's a school night, so not running you off, just it's up to you. So that moves us into 14.1, that's Bullying Prevention Month. We've got a resolution up, it's an action item.
Thank you. Ms. Briggs is actually under the weather, and I think, is that with the summer schedule?
Yes.
Your interst.
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer.
Yes, I think we, yes. So, October is Bullying Prevention Month, so we have a proclamation before you, this is for action, for you to approve. Do we want to read the proclamation? No, okay. You have it before you, I don't know if you need it.
I think we're good, we're all looking at it, it's on board docs, if anybody wants to see it. Certainly no one up here condones bullying in any form or fashion, so.
No, we do not.
Entertaining the motion, yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve, recognizing October is Bullying Prevention Month throughout Isle of Wight County schools.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Colick?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mrs. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Wooster?
Yes.
And Mr. Marsh.
Yes, motion passes. We appreciate y'all putting that together. And that moves us to 14.2, Georgie Tyler Middle School Parking and Suffolk Transit Park and Ride, Mrs. Oliver and Dr. Coleman.
Mr. Chair, school board members, Dr. Kramer. Today we have Ms. Jamie Oliver here with us, and she's going to go in a little bit of detail concerning the Georgie Tyler Middle School parking spaces, but more in detail about the Suffolk Transit Park and Ride that she's been working on a project for a little bit over two years. All right, Ms. Oliver.
Push the button, there we go. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Jamie Oliver, County Director of Transportation. This is a project that we got a grant fund, funding for with the city of Suffolk approximately two years ago. We're going to be doing a pilot transit program where we'll be running a bus route from the city of Suffolk downtown through the OBCE Health Center, and then through Windsor, and then looping back to Suffolk. It'll be running approximately four times a day to try and serve commuters through the Windsor area into some of the services that are in Suffolk. Hopefully, the route is going to start sometime this winter after the new year, once the buses come in. We're looking at two stops in the county. One will be in Shirley T. Holland over between Keurig and the new 460 Commerce Center that's under construction on Gaultney Way, and the other location that we're looking at is somewhere in this location in the Court Street near Windsor Community Center. So what the county would like is the school board's concurrence to use up to four parking spaces at the corner of the lot at Georgie D. Tyler to be converted into what would function as park and ride spaces to serve a bus stop, which would be put right there on Court Street itself. If we could flip to the next slide. What you can see here is right there at the corner of the entrance, we have an existing sidewalk there that we'll be putting the bus shelter at. The bus itself would not enter the parking lot, we think that's a particularly important feature of having it at this location. That way pedestrians can access the bus shelter and the bus does not have to go through either the community center or the school parking lot to be accessible. And then we would be able to convert just those four spaces into possibly one or two regular spaces and one fully accessible ADA handicap space. People could park their car there, catch the bus, and then come back to their car that's parked there. This would not be a 24-hour lot, the bus, like I said, would run four loops a day for the pilot program, and then as we've spoken with the school district, we're certainly completely amendable and have the same standards for any type of regulations in the parking lot as far as what we accept for behavior and expectations for drug-free location and all the other standards that the school holds for public safety in that location, and we would also put up signage as far as no overnight parking, that sort of thing. It's the same public facility as anything else that the county uses.
Because you mentioned signs, and it is school property, along with drug-free, maybe weapons-free?
Weapons-free.
I would assume that most people understand that, but I wouldn't want to assume anything, so.
We're certainly glad to coordinate any signage. We'll be putting the actual bus stop, like transit stop sign out in the public right-of-way, and we can put the park and ride location and no overnight parking in the right-of-way as well, but we can certainly coordinate with your staff to put up whatever safety and acceptable usage signage that you would like.
And that's a good point. Not only, we're going to reinforce that this type of signage is there, but also at every school, this is time for us to do a nice audit across every school to ensure that that same signage is at every parking lot, so thank you.
Correct, your policies are the same as county property policies, so.
For the listening audience, are there any concerns from the school's perspective about giving up a few parking spots? I know parking's pretty chaotic over there when, if there's an event going on or someone's running out the auditorium, or the little kids are playing football out there, it gets crazy.
Right. Those four parking spots that we're speaking of, those four are actually occupied by our cars, our county cars, most times, and there'll be plenty of parking there that does not need those four parking spaces. Now, when there is Little League football and different events of that nature there, it does get very crowded there, but at the same time, that is not a daily issue. So the four spaces will be fine.
And we are also more than open to reevaluating the location of the actual park and ride spaces. The bus stop itself will stay in that location, of course, but we're more than open to reevaluating the location of the spaces themselves as that location builds out, because I know there's conversations about whether or not another ball field goes there, whether or not the library goes there with parking. As any changes occur at that location, or even if the parking lot itself is expanded at the community center, we can certainly reevaluate. One of the reasons we're looking at that location is because there's very little actual investment needed, the infrastructure's already there, it's just restriping, so we can always reevaluate if we need to down the road.
Comments from the board?
I've got one question, is this more like a pilot-run this bus system, or?
It is, so the funding that we have will help us put up the actual, the two shelters, create the stops, and then it will also purchase two buses to run the pilot program. We have operational expenses for two years, so hopefully the pilot program will be able to show us a success rate that allows us to continue in cooperation with the city of Suffolk, but at the moment it is only considered a pilot run.
Okay, yeah, my concern is that, I don't go over there often, but when I do, it's usually very limited parking in there, so that's the biggest concern that I have with doing this.
This is a rare occasion, I will only have one question for this topic. My, I'm pretty much mirroring Mr. Colick's aspect here. My question is, will this have any impact on current parking needs or student loading, unloading, or parent pickup and drop-off?
The parent pickup and drop-off is literally in front of the school, this is near, closer to the road, so I do not see it having an issue. Now, if there's a line forming, I mean, lines will form and traffic will back up, that's at every school system that we have. So, those four parking spaces, I do not see that those four parking spaces are going to cause a dilemma in the current operations as we know of at this time. Now, if we were getting into a situation where now it's turning into 10, 15, 20, now that's a conversation I can go back and have, and have with the board to let you know, but at this time, it's only designated four parking spaces, just FYI.
And I would say as well that we have coordinated closely with Suffolk Transit and explained to them that it's very important that we try to avoid the arrival half hour to 45 minutes and the dismissal half hour to 45 minutes. They've sent us a preliminary route timetable, which definitely avoids those periods, it's not finalized, but they are completely on board with that, it's in their best interest from an efficiency standpoint to not be in the area for those periods as well. So, it is also our goal really to not be in that car line at all either.
Yes, sir.
I have a question on, if we find out that the four parking spaces are not enough, where will the people park? I mean, you know, because the schools right there, they're going to take some of our parking spots, the teachers' or the students' parking spots? I mean, we need to think about that, or has anybody thought about that?
So what a great problem to have, that we have so many people to ride the bus, we don't know where they'll park. I think we would have to reevaluate at that time about expanding the parking lot to suit that, because I think if we were to grow beyond four spaces, then we would need to look at dedicated parking for this use. And I think at that point, we would have to look at where we were generating those users from, and possibly that the parking needs to be closer to where they're at. Because I don't feel like the school is going to be generating those users, they're going to be coming from somewhere else and parking at that location, so perhaps we need to look at expanding the parking possibly at the community center, or adding parking at the vacant land that's nearby, but if it goes beyond the four spaces and we find that we need more room, I think we need to reevaluate where we need to put that, because I don't think expanding where it's at there would necessarily be the right answer in that case. But that is an exciting problem to contemplate.
Yeah, yeah, because I'm thinking, once people find out this service is going to be available, and they start telling their friends, oh, this is great, you know, we don't have to drive, we can just catch the bus, whatever case may be, more people are going to want to do it, but then we don't have anywhere for them to park.
Correct, and we've really thought too that serving the community center is kind of a primary goal of the stop being in this location, serving the town in general with the pedestrian access that it has there, but serving the community center users as well. I just think at this time, the parking lot is not particularly set up for the buses cutting through to access that location, so I think, again, as we develop that cluster of use right there, if we look at how we access that site through the parking lot, if we can improve that, again, it might be that we move this footprint somewhere else.
Okay, thank you.
Will this add any security issues for the school at all? Do we have any concerns for safety, security with this?
The conversation that I had with Ms. Oliver is, security concerns will be the cars that are left there, and the number of cars, as Mr. Cunningham has alluded to, so the security of cars being left there, and of course the signs out of what's left in those cars. Not saying that something will be left in those cars, but what's left in those cars. But once again, that's us guessing it's something that has not occurred, maybe occurred, maybe not occurred, but just guessing, that would be the security concern.
Mr. Chair, I do have one more question.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
What is the date that we're trying to kick this off?
So at this point, it's partly depending on when the buses that we've ordered actually come in. I think our current date- I think our current date is somewhere around February or March.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to table this, and really, let's go look at the parking lot during some peak hours to see, you know, if we can sustain this. I, I don't think we should vote on it tonight.
Has that already been accomplished?
Has what already been accomplished?
Have you already been over there during peak hours to assess it?
Yes, but I can go over, I can take pictures so everyone can get a better understanding from what I've seen. I can talk more with the principal at peak hours, and, you know, I can follow back up, whatever the school board wish for this particular project.
Is that the will of the board? I mean, I'm, I'm, personally, I'm good with it. It's a pilot. If the pilot doesn't work, we can certainly revisit.
I think it's a good idea. I just, I'm not convinced that's the right place for it. I'd like to, you know, I'm going to drive over there and take a look during school hours on several different days to see what's going on there and what's going on at, when the town center, as far as parking goes, if we table this. And I think that just gives us a better idea, and then we'll, we'll be more comfortable whichever way we go.
For whatever it's worth, I drive by there twice a day. I would say that the town center, for the most part, is pretty empty. The exception to that is when there's an event going on, the, and this little sports, the name of the football team slips me right now. When the football kids are out there playing, it gets pretty hectic. When someone's renting the town center, then parking gets tight. But by far and large, on a normal basis, there's plenty of parking over there. And certainly during pickup and drop-off, like I pick up and drop off my daughter over there, that's the exception, right? So, everybody's jammed in there, because you've got two rows of cars driving through the parking lot.
Right.
Whatever the will of the board, I'm of the opinion that we let the pilot go, see how it works. I think the idea is to target the senior community, so that we can transport senior citizens down to the oversea and whatnot.
Yeah. I, I think we've got the time. Okay, we've got a couple of months, and I think we can revisit this next month with ease. So, I, you know, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and table this until the next meeting.
Do we have the time?
Okay. Mr. Chair, I also can vote as well.
And just one more comment. Can you just repeat that?
Sure. I would, I would say that we certainly have time for one more month of consideration, but we do still have to actually put the bus shelter in place before the route starts. You know, we don't have concrete port or anything out there. So, I would ask that, you know, if it does get tabled, that we can plan on taking action within the next month.
And I think that's fair, yeah.
We've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Madam Clerk, take a vote, please, dear.
Mr. Colick?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mrs. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Wooster?
Yes.
And Mr. Marsh?
Yes. So, we'll revisit that October.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver.
We're going to take a quick five-minute recess for bathroom break.
Good to go.
That's on hold. Very good. Yep, ready to go.
We're back in session. Fourteen three, Mr. Brinkley.
Board of Chair, School Board members, Dr. Kramer, school safety officers, we'd like to discuss tonight the status of the school safety officers in Alawite at this time. There's been a lot of talk, I think one of the student liaisons pointed this out before, getting the school safety officers in the school and the things that they're doing in the school, the most powerful, working with the students and also working with the weapons detection system. And Mr. Brinkley is going to talk a little bit more about what they're doing in the school and the changes that we've made this year with the school safety officers as it relates to the weapon detection system.
Good evening, Board members, Chairman Marsh, Dr. Kramer. Wanted to just kind of go into our proposal for what we're, what we are proposing for additional school security officers and the role that they play in the weapons detection system. We heard our liaisons tonight talking about how things are going at the schools and obviously at the, at the beginning of the year, we expected to have some, some delays versus where we were at the end of the school year last year. One of the big things that we've, one of the biggest complaints that we have heard for the weapons detection system is them not being run and not being manned all throughout the day to account for late arrivals, visitors, deliveries, things such as that that are coming into the schools. And one issue that we face with that is the staffing to do that. We, we utilize a lot of teachers, obviously our administrators are manning these systems in the morning and we have made changes as, as a result of our incident from, from this past year. We're trying to get away from teachers being the ones to do these, these bag searches. We would like to have the security personnel and the administrators only doing that. So we have transitioned into that this year and it has proven to be, be very effective. But with that being said, obviously with the, the volume of students that we have at, at Smithfield High School and, and, and all of the other schools, it, the staffing becomes an issue when we're looking at manning that system all throughout the day. Right now, we are keeping the system running all throughout the day at Smithfield High School. We just have the ability to do that there right now. But the proposal that we're looking at is utilizing a contract security company and this, in doing this, we are looking to add seven school security officers to our division. This would include one SSO at Smithfield High School, one SSO at Windsor High School, in addition to the ones that we already have. As you all know, purchased out of the capital improvement plan for this year, we have just purchased the weapons detection systems for the middle schools. So moving forward with the gaps that we've seen as we've, as we've rolled these out at the high schools, in order to fill these gaps and staffing, these additional personnel are, are much needed. So at Smithfield Middle School, we're looking at adding two school security officers, two at Georgie Tyler Middle School, and then one division-wide lead or a rove position. This rove position, what that would allow us to do in the absence of any of our other SSOs, we don't have those gaps. This person will be able to float throughout the division and fill in those gaps if they were out due to illness, training, different things like that. So this would give us that rove position to, to fill in those gaps. And I, I can tell you in, just in talking to the administrators, the, the SSOs that we have right now have proven to be very effective, not only with increasing the safety patrols, helping with the weapons detection systems, but also in, in just building relationships with students and being, being a positive mentor in, in that role as well. One of the issues that we did face when we got the initial three positions was filling these positions. We, we did have some struggles getting qualified applicants and finding someone qualified to, to fill these roles. So that is one of the reasons that we're look, looking at going into this contract security and I'll let Dr. Coleman talk more about that as far as the contract security goes.
Doc, Mr. Brinkley, before we go any further, give us a little background and refresh the board's memory and the listening audience. So today, we have funded positions for SSOs at which schools and how many?
We have two positions at Smithfield High School that are, that are, which are both filled currently. We have one position for an SSO at Windsor High School, which is also currently filled.
And no one else?
That's it.
Correct. And if memory serves, last year, one of the items requested was additional SSOs and it didn't make the cut?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure everybody was squared away on that. And so you're asking for seven more and tell me again where those sevens are going? Smithfield High School you want?
One additional at Smithfield High School, one additional at Windsor High School, two at Smithfield Middle School, which they currently have none, two at Georgie Tyler Middle School, which currently have none, and then it would be the one division-wide lead or rove position.
Got it. Thank you.
Mr. Brinkley, I do know that one SSO moved and I believe another, I could be wrong with us, and I think there was two that left. What happened to those positions? Were they filled or are they still vacant?
The position was filled. We had one that left from Smithfield High School, that position was filled, and then we've actually had two that have been hired and left from, from Windsor High School, but that position has also been filled.
Okay, thank you.
And with the conversation concerning the field, when those SSOs do leave the division, there is going to be a time period before you can fill those SSOs. But at the same time, while they are not in the division, operating must go on. The daily operating must go on with the weapons detection systems and items of that nature. When using an outside agency, and there's several national organizations that we looked at in order to do this, the first thing we did was look at who's operating in Virginia at this time? What national organizations are large enough to staff and operate in Virginia at this time? What are other school divisions doing? So we researched the other school divisions in there and then of course, we went through DCJS. We looked at what organizations outside in various counties in Virginia have, have operated under DCJS, meaning individuals being trained by DCJS. One thing that Mr. Brinkley assures is that all of the SSOs that come to Alawite are fully trained through DCJS. So what outside company can actually provide those with all of the training needed? And also, which company can provide SSO at the last second, oh, personnel issue occurs and one of the SSOs have to leave and we need one tomorrow? Who can provide those SSOs, fully certified, ready to go? So one thing that we looked at is, once again, the outside vendor. Now, getting into, when do we need the SSOs? We need the SSOs when staff and students are here. So, looking at hiring and then at the same time, outside vendor, we're looking at twelve month contracts and eight month contracts. So using outside agency, once again, we can really focus on the eight month contracts. We really don't have to pay an individual to be here over Thanksgiving break or over Christmas break or over spring break in areas like that. And I also wanted to point out, Mr. Brinkley has stated that there is a lead involved. We have the SSOs over there and there's a lead. There will be a lead to consolidate everyone's timesheets and make sure that everyone is doing the right thing, to make sure everyone is, has a point of contact. But at the same time, the lead is boots on ground. The lead will be utilized wherever we need the lead to be utilized. It's not a position where he's just sits in the office, he or she just sits in the office or something of that nature. They're boots on ground and they're working out, they're working right alongside wherever we need them in the division. So let me give you a little insight on the different companies that we've been looking at, talking to, discussing with, concerning moving forward.
Can I?
And one of our, one of our concerns as we move forward with, with vetting some of these security companies is we know that the security officers that we have in our schools, we need consistency for our students. We don't need, we don't need to have one security officer there one day and then somebody completely different there the next day. So that is one of the things that we have looked at when we've been vetting these companies is that we will have that consistency. We will have the same person in the buildings day after day so that they can build those relationships, get to know the students, get to know the staff so that we, so that they're able to form a cohesive work environment. So that is one of the things, and as Dr. Coleman mentioned, most of the reputable companies provide their security officers with the DCJS School Security Officer Certification, which is a, it's a two-day course, but it goes through a lot of the legals on what they can and cannot do, their roles, what, what their capabilities are. So they actually have trainers for these companies that, that train all their staff to the DCJS standards. So we don't have to worry about, about that either. They're already trained up to the DCJS standards.
With that said, are there any questions concerning the information?
Mr. Cunningham, go ahead, sir.
Dr. Coleman, I know people are wondering, what's, what's the cost going to be? I mean, that's, that's one thing. We know we need them, but we need to know how much it's going to cost.
Absolutely.
Because we're going to have to take this to the Board of Supervisors in trying to get the money.
Well, if, if I may, Dr. Coleman, so for this year, sir, we will not go to the Board of Supervisors. We have worked with our CFO and we are committed to identifying the funds for this current school year. So we will find the funds. This is important enough for us to find the funds, whether it's through vacancy savings, whether it's through us reallocating resources, but the school division will identify the funds for this current school year. Now, as we have budget discussions for fiscal twenty-six, twenty-seven, yes, that will be a discussion about where we going to the Board of Supervisors or me as superintendent asking for that in my proposed budget. But for the current year, we will, I'm committed to working with the CFO, Mrs. Savery, and our staff to identify the funds. Just wanted to make that clear.
Okay. And that's, that's what I wanted the audience to hear because we've already discussed that. But, you know, people are saying, well, you know, how much is that going to cost? I'm not worried about the cost. I'm worried about protecting the kids, protecting the staff, protecting everybody in the school. So the cost, you know, we're figuring it out, but you gave me the answer that I wanted the audience to hear because a lot of people who don't have kids in the schools, who don't have relatives working in the schools, they're going to have to, you know, they're thinking, well, what is this going to cost in the future? Thank you.
Absolutely. And thank you for the question and I think you said it well. The cost is certainly secondary to the life of a child or a staff member. So thank you for the question. But I think we can provide a cost and look at what that would cost relative to actually hiring if we were to do that. So I think Dr. Coleman does have a quote for what each position would be, if you could share that, sir.
And the overall cost for the seven SSOs will be three hundred and five thousand. That is for seven DCJS-trained SSOs, there's three hundred and five thousand there.
And approximately per, per position, what would that be?
It was forty thousand per position and sixty thousand for the lead, if I'm not mistaken.
Say, say it again, Doc, I can't hear you.
It was three hundred and five thousand overall and I think it was forty thousand, I have to look at my notes very quickly, forty thousand for each officer and sixty thousand for the lead.
And, and to be clear, we're not adding positions, you're asking, you're, you're not asking to add seven positions, you're asking to purchase contracted services that equates to seven positions.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
I think that's important to point out.
That's very important.
We're not adding seven positions. And I think you guys have covered this well, Mr. Cunningham nailed it. So you, you have to stroke the check, right? And due in large part to that nice lady right there, Mrs. Savery, we ended up with a roughly two million dollar.
She'll be sharing that later as well.
Yeah, we'll get into the numbers a bit later, but between the, the excesses that we found, which were by large part rolled into our healthcare fund, were mainly due to unfilled positions. Again, this year, we started out with some unfilled positions and coupled that with Mr. Colick and Mrs. Perkins' initiative for the Fiscal Efficacy Working Group, I think we're in a good spot if we can identify these funds and make it happen. And certainly there'll be work to do as we roll into the budget season for next year, but.
Yes, I think you're correct, sir.
Mr. Colick, you had something?
Yeah, just to get some clarification. So I heard two different things as far as the training goes. I heard first that they were trained to the DCJS standards by their employer, but I think I also heard they are trained by DCJS, which, which is correct.
So they, they, the companies that we have looked at have staff that are certified instructors for the SSO program through DCJS. So they're trained by their employers, but they are certified through the Department of Criminal Justice Services.
They do get a certification?
Yes.
Okay, very good. That, that was my question.
And you train hours, they might, they might have an initial.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Coleman, I know we've talked about this previously, but looking at the weapons detection systems.
Yes, sir.
Ultimately, and I'm going to speak for myself, my goal is to eventually have them in every school and staffed for the duration of the school day. That would be in a perfect world where we have everything in place. I told you before that if we have the detection systems in place, if they're not staffed for the duration of the school day, when you take into consideration the number of visitors, parents, maintenance workers, whomever comes into the school, after that initial arrival of students, if there's nothing to vet those people coming through, we might as well not have the systems. So this is not a question per se, it's just more of a support. You know very well, I've supported this from day one. And correct me if I'm wrong here, but in the beginning, teachers were utilized to staff the weapons detection systems, correct?
Yes. And, and just to clarify that, the teachers and other staff are still being used for this process. We've moved them away from the role of actually conducting the bag searches. So they are our greeters, they are the ones monitoring the systems as the students are coming through and then directing them to the secondary screening areas where then their belongings are being searched. We, we tried to get away from having teachers and other staff conducting those searches. We've tried to have the school security officers and the administrators doing that now.
Okay. So that does generate one question for me. If the teachers are still being utilized and they have not been trained in this, is that opening up them for any legal liability should anything occur?
No, and we have, we have gone through, through training at both high schools this year prior to, prior to school starting and gone over the roles and the, and the training on the systems and how they operate and what they need to do in certain situations.
Okay, that's all I've got.
May I respond to Mr. Wooster's question? First, I want to thank you, Mr. Wooster, for your comments and I totally agree with you, sir, that without the proper personnel, just having the devices, it's honestly, it's almost for show. So we are going to need the proper personnel, so thank you for that comment. Regarding using the teachers, I think, yes, we can use them, students are coming in, just directing them, but in terms of checking badge, bags and doing things that are more in-depth that would warrant the attention of a certified security personnel, I think we're removing them from that process. So I appreciate your comments and your concern for our teachers.
Yeah, I just, I want to make certain that we're not putting them into any potential liability or in a physical risk of harm in that position. That's my main concern.
I totally agree with you, sir. I would like to also say that we don't often, you know, compare ourselves to, to other districts, but I'll tell you, in most places, many places, let me see, in many places I've worked, a former high school principal, many schools, and we went to visit some other districts when we were looking at implementing this, many schools, individual schools have as many security as we're asking for in total. We're talking six, seven in certain high schools in this region. So there's a lot more I think we can do. You know, Mrs. Schaefer, our parent who's still with us, I think spoke eloquently to what the issues we are seeing in our county, in our region, and unfortunately in our country. I don't think we can do enough and I appreciate you all listening and hearing us out and, and being supportive of the new efforts we are making to provide more security to our schools.
It's, it sounds like we're, we're going to take some action and you're, you're being supported up here. What with the motion, what are you specifically asking from the board tonight?
Good, Mr. I think we've written out for Mr. Wooster, but Mr. Brinkley, would you verbalize what the ask is?
Just looking for the approval to, to employ contract security for the remainder of the SY twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Okay, do we need to tie a dollar amount to it?
I, I think not. I think you're giving us, we've articulated what that is because we are going to be responsible for this year to find those dollars, so that is incumbent upon me as your superintendent to find those dollars. And I think the beauty of this is if we get to May and realize that there might be a better option for us, we're going to be committed to this contractual obligation for the year so it doesn't tie our hands indefinitely. But yes, I don't think you need to, I would rather not because again, it's going to be incumbent upon me as superintendent to identify where we find those dollars.
No, I do have a question about that, Dr. Kramer. If you find that you're moving, you know, three hundred thousand dollars from, from one category to another, that would require a board's approval, wouldn't it?
Well, we are no longer funded categorically, so that's no longer a, a limitation. I would absolutely make certain that we make you aware of the funding source and where we're moving the dollars. But again, that's going to be my responsibility as superintendent to ensure that we fund this initiative.
Okay, if there's no requirement, then it's fine with it then.
So that, that would be my ask, Dr. Kramer and, and Mrs. Savery, as we march through this current fiscal year, we keep a run and tally of items that we've purchased that are above and beyond stuff that was formally budgeted for.
And I won't call Mrs. Savery up to the microphone, she can speak to this when she comes up later, but she and I had this conversation as well, and we will only pay them for the services that are rendered.
Right.
So they're not going to get a three hundred thousand dollar check upfront. They will only get paid as the work is, is being provided.
I guess the, just kind of to echo what Mr. Colick's saying, as we move forward with the efficacy group budgeting, looking for excesses and basically cleaning up any slop in the budget, if there's any slop, looking for vacant positions that have historically went unfilled, I think it's important to capture where that funding is coming from.
Certainly.
Because it, come January, February, we'll all be sitting up here scratching our heads trying to figure out what's going on.
Absolutely. No, I think that's a fair request.
That lady right there will know, but everybody else will be trying to catch up.
Yes. No, I think that's a fair request, that we inform you as to where we're providing the funding.
Yes, sir.
Where it's coming from.
Mr. Cunningham? Oh, go ahead.
Okay, anyway, this is a quick one. If we do vote yea tonight, how soon will the SSOs be here?
And, yes, sir. It will take thirty to forty-five days for the SSO to be fully background-checked, trained, and ready for service in Alawite County. So upon the permission to move forward, that's how long, between thirty and forty-five days.
So we're talking around November?
If we move soon and it's making certain that we find the, you know, appropriate personnel, it's going to be seven individuals that they have to find and we're looking at that, Mr. Colick, as this in the one-on-one conversations, we're going to be looking for continuity, making certain that we're not just being sent different people. So we do want that. We've spoken with one of the firms and we are going to ask that they wear the same polo security outfits that our staff will be wearing. They may have the logo from that company, but we want as much continuity and consistency between the individuals who will, will be assigned to us and the individuals we currently have on staff.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead. Cole, what say you? I just wanted to thank you guys for making this a priority and taking it out of not, not going to the, the Board of Supervisor, but taking it out of your pocket directly. I really, as the voice of the students, I know every student at Windsor is very, very happy about this and I'm very appreciative for the board for this, for making this a number one priority. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment, Cole.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to allow the superintendent to engage in a contract for security services for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing known, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Colick?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mrs. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Wooster?
Yes.
And Mr. Marsh?
Yes, motion passes. Go do great things, Mr. Brinkley.
Thank you all.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Kramer. Tonight, we are asking approval for the addition of twelve part-time lunch and recess monitors for our elementary schools. Currently, our elementary school teachers have an encumbered lunch, meaning they have thirty minutes for lunch, but it is on duty in the cafeteria, they eat while they monitor their students. We are asking for these positions so that we can hopefully allow our teachers to have a free lunch period where they can eat, plan, make phone calls, do whatever they need to do. And it's actually part of the code that they should have an unencumbered lunch. I'm here to take any questions and again, we're asking for vote tonight for approval.
Say that last bit again, Mrs. Getz.
The part about Virginia Code states that elementary teachers should have a thirty-minute duty-free lunch period.
I won't give you any names, but I know that a school division in our region is currently involved in a lawsuit for that very reason. Sir?
Mr. Chair, if I may, this is one of the things that I've already mentioned to Dr. Kramer. I'm glad to see this is finally being addressed because I have brought this up in the past. The Virginia Code and the Board of Education stipulates that teachers will have a thirty-minute unencumbered planning period slash lunch. You're correct, that is found in Code twenty-two point one dash two-nine-one point one. I have no problem with this. So that's all I've got. I'm just glad it's finally being addressed.
Great, thanks, Mr. Wooster.
I think the same questions will apply regarding funding. So if you could rattle through the same gist.
Yeah, and because these are part-time positions, the cost is going to be significantly less than what we discussed a bit earlier. I think, and please correct me, Mr. Savery, I think we're looking at somewhere between a hundred, approximately a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the year, which I honestly think is a modest amount to extend this, and it's not a courtesy, it's, it's something that they are entitled to, to all of our elementary schools. I, I think this is going to be a major benefit and it's going to give them some time back, hopefully, approximately an hour a day, I'm thinking, for recess and lunch, when you combine the, the two times together. And as Ms. Getz stated, time for them to make copies, call parents, planning what have you, and hopefully a little bit less time at the end of the day or at home or on the weekends. So this is occurring in most districts, virtually every place I've worked in the past twenty years prior to here, lunch and recess monitors were a standard and that's what we're asking here. And I thank you for your comment, Mr. Vice Chair Wooster, and thank you for your comment, Chair Marsh, and all of you as we had the discussions one-on-one, I think you're supportive of this. But yes, we will, for this year, yes, Mrs. Savery and I have had discussions and she's met with our team as well, and like the previous conversation, we will figure out a way to pay for it this year. Now again, moving forward for fiscal- Now again, moving forward for fiscal twenty-seven, as we have those discussions, that will be a, a topic of conversation. But for this year, we are committed to finding that approximately a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Dr. Kramer, I think you mentioned this at the convocation, uh, that this was something we're looking at.
Yes.
And, uh, that night after the convocation, I was told by quite a number of teachers, this is something they want. So, um, I, I think it's the right thing to do and it's the right time to do it.
And thank you, teachers, for advocating for yourselves.
It seems as we, you know, we're, there's a lot of moving pieces coming this budget year. Pay, pay and benefits is a big part of that and certainly plays into the overall package.
Dr. Kramer, I knew in previous discussion, we were looking at part-time for the lunch recess monitors. Is that still the same?
Yes, and thank you for the question. Uh, are you finished?
Uh, well, I'm just, the other part to my question is how many persons would be needed to accomplish this?
Ms. Getz, would you speak to that? I can speak to my experience, uh, many places I've worked. So Mrs. Getz, um, and the, um, Director for Elementary Schools, Dr. Stith Johnson, we're looking at different models. But by and large, in many places you use, uh, part-time, uh, individuals are, well, the positions will be part, part-time. But you often use individuals who sometimes are stay-at-home moms, retirees. We've even discussed, uh, using some of our bus aides, offering this as an opportunity between runs during the day. But we need people who are doing this part-time, but doing it on a full-time basis. Meaning you're not, you're only working four hours a day, I think is what we're looking at, but you're doing that throughout the year. Uh, I think when we talked about this before, someone mentioned using volunteers and you can't do this with volunteers because it's gotta be something you're committed to doing five days a week, every day students are there. So we need dedicated individuals who are paid to do this, and we're looking at, uh, I think-
Twelve.
Twelve individuals total. And we may use some other staff members, uh, in the building to make this work.
Correct.
Uh, IAs, et cetera. So that discussion is occurring. And I think we're looking at approximately two to three, uh, per school approximately. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Ready to entertain a motion, sir?
Mr. Chair, I move to allow the superintendent to add positions for the purpose of lunch and recess monitors for the elementary schools.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Collick?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mrs. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Wooster?
Yes.
And Mr. Marsh?
Yes, motion passes. For the listening audience, if you're looking for a part-time gig and you want to come hang out with elementary schools during lunch break and recess, contact Mrs. Sullivan at HR.
Thank you all very much.
Okay. Take care, Cole. Have a good night. Mr. Feig, thanks for the shirts, by the way, sir.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mr. Chair, board members, Dr. Kramer. Um, I know you have the list of auction items for the Transportation Department, the eighteen items in front of you, and I'd be happy to answer, answer any questions you have with those.
When is the auction going to be held?
So it's gonna be an online auction. Um, so, uh, real, we put it on there. It's, uh, it's an online platform. There's a set period of time. Um, our goal is to get the, um, so, you know, we have to do the work behind it, so that's gonna be our staff. That'll be Mr. Sullivan and his department. So we hope to have those up there. Uh, we're looking October, November. Uh, we do anticipate it being this fall.
Okay. Anybody else? Over to you, Mr. Wooster.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the transportation vehicles list that has been presented for auction.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing non, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Collick?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mrs. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Wooster?
Yes.
And Mr. Marsh?
Yes, motion passes. Mr. Feig, are you gonna give us an update later on about your first couple of weeks of school?
I will be back. That's all right.
Nice.
Mr. Feig, I've just got one question for you real quick, something ma- major. Are you gonna be here for the rest of the meeting or do you have to take off?
Uh, no, sir. I will be here. I'm on the agenda and a couple more items coming up.
Okay, okay. I just need to see you at the end of the meeting if you're still here.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Moving right along, that takes us to our capital improvement plan. It's another action item. Dr. Coleman presented this last month. Formally, it was our first formal public look last month.
It was the unconsolidated version. This is consolidated for the ranking.
And then last month, we, we agreed to put a little bit more work into it.
Absolutely. Can you enlarge that at all? If you can, I understand. Okay, there we go. I just read the board this time. It keeps changing.
Do you want to talk through this, sir?
Yes, sir. All right. What you're gonna see is the template from the last year. We thought it worked pretty well, so we want to go back with this template. All right. What you have are the items on the CIP. And, um, just to recap from last month, we took the items that were unfunded last year, the items from the community survey, and the items from the new CIP this year, combined those items, and that's how we formed this list on the left-hand side. Uh, the proposed cost is in the second column, and as you can see, there's two question marks. One beside New Westside and one beside the Smithfield High School renovation. This is because we do not have architectural plans, drawings, or designs that can give us an idea of exactly how much that project will cost. Next to that, you have, um, the five school board members and their rankings. Lower number means the higher priority and higher number is lower priority. And in the red, the school board member, um, recommended deferral until later. Under that column, you have the other items, and these are items, if you can slide a little bit to your left. And these are items like the unplanned capital needs. This was a one-time expense. Fleet service building and bandroom renovation. These are, has been initiated with architectural design purchase and has been unofficially earmarked by the Board of Supervisors as of FY twenty-six, twenty-seven, uh, to be a funded expense. So if you remember correctly, we already earmarked the funds for the architectural designs, and those are gonna be the funds for the second wave of, of the project. And of course, it's our five school buses annually. So I just wanted to ensure that I listed that out for the public to see those items that are funded and still in leeway. So that's what we have at this time. If you go down a little bit further, after everything is calculated, and of course, I know that we're gonna come back up, we have the overall school board priority listed at the bottom, one, two, three, four, five. And it is ten sets of elementary school security equipment, AKA the weapons detection devices, division-wide bathroom repair, replacement upgrade of the HVAC systems at CES, and replacement upgrade of the HVAC system at Windsor High School, disaster recovery center, and, uh, in New Westside with the question mark there. Any of these items you needed me to go into more detail about and explain, um, uh, at this time, please ask away.
So, Doc, I think it's important to kind of give a little background, so, and you keep me, give me some rudder orders, orders here if I'm getting something wrong. But historically, the Alawak County Schools CIP is done late in the year.
Later, yes.
Later in the year. So we've already been working on this for at least two months.
At least, yes.
At least. Uh, and the reason this got initiated early is because the Board of Supervisors are working to update the county's comprehensive plan.
Yes.
And a part of that comprehensive plan includes a CIP.
Yes, sir.
So there's been a lot of discussions early on with the county, uh, just to s- speak plain language. The ask was put out for the schools to give us a five-to-ten-year capital improvement, lack of a better word, wish list, so that the county can not only plan for future funding needs, but also as these housing developments come up, they can look at what we really need, and if the opportunity comes up to solicit proffers from developers, they have something to use and go by.
That is correct.
So, and this is, in, in Marsh's mind, the top two, three, four, five things are probably the most important. Everything else on that is literally a wish list that will undoubtedly change as other funding opportunities come and go.
And that is correct also.
For example, we, uh, perhaps the county were to receive some sort of proffers and somewhere, one of these items, it was lower in on the priority because of the way the proffers are written. Maybe they could solicit a funding item for something that wasn't necessarily a high priority for us.
Yes, sir. And that's what occurred with the bandroom and the, and the funding of the bandroom was through the proffers.
Yes, sir. That's exactly right. So last year, we didn't prioritize the bandroom on top, but we got funding because they were able to utilize proffers from the developers.
And it was on the CIP.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So that's kind of the idea behind this. It's, it's a overall ranking. And, uh, we have a meeting scheduled for a joint work session, the school board and the Board of Supervisors next month, October seventh.
Yes.
Will be a work session, uh, and this will be one of the things that's discussed there.
Yes, that is correct.
Comments from my colleagues up here? I think we've already done the work here. It kind of stands on its own. We've already ranked them.
I've, I've got a couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
And this is just, you know, so I fully understand this. So over in the green, uh, where we've got the fleet services bill and the ba- uh, bandroom renovation and the five buses annually. So they're already on the SIP, correct? Or are they going to be listed with the others?
They are not going to be listed with the others, the ones in the green. They are the unplanned capital needs, maybe a one-time expense. And the five school buses have already, uh, is the, let's just say once again, the handshake, the unofficial. And of course, the other two items, they are not funded, but they are stated to be funded. So if you would like to put those items on the list, I can slide it back over to the list.
Yeah, cause I, I want to make sure they don't fall off because we've already started all the work on them and everything. So, so that's really my question, to make sure we, we have them in place so they don't fall off.
Yes.
I don't want the Board of Supervisors to look, oh, here's six more. Yeah, we can take care of them and ignore what we asked for, you know, last year. It's actually a bigger priority.
Yes, sir. I'll make sure that, that is laid back over on the list.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for that, Mr. Collick, if I may, Mr. Chair. I, I think you're right. Although, as Dr. Coleman suggested, I think there's been a sort of lady-gentleman's agreement, uh, but I, I would like that to be codified somewhere so that, you know, people come and go. I would like that to be, uh, evident somewhere, that that's a commitment.
And that's, that's, that's a huge part of this, right? So even though, I don't know, uh, there's something may be, it may not happen ten years down the road. This year, when Mr. Cunningham decides to depart the pattern, whoever walks in here can go, okay, well, this was what the priority was. Okay, um, it is an action item. I, I- Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Wooster. Go ahead.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes, sir.
You saved yourself quite a few questions by breaking it down like this.
Oh, that's outstanding.
Looking at the overall rating priorities, um, I notice you've got two that are ranked at the same. Are you looking at the top five or the top six items?
All right. So, uh, those two items, the replace, upgrade HVAC system at Windsor High School and the disaster recovery generator, uh, equal out to the same points. So what we did last year, we was elicited just like that, we listed two items for one ranking. So with that stated, uh, it's up to the board to decide, two items receive the same ranking. It's up to you to decide which one should be A, should be for A, should be, and the next one be for B. But that's, um, that's up for you to decide.
Okay, I was just curious on that.
Okay.
And I know we've talked about it before, but I'd like to discuss it a little bit further for, uh, you know, the people listening in and just for transparency and clarity for the public. Dealing with the HVAC system at Carisville, uh, for three hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Yes.
Can you explain the reasoning and whether or not that could actually be held over for a future date?
All right. Um, when looking at the HVAC system, it was easy as just to state, replace, or upgrade the HVAC systems. Uh, as you've seen, the one in Car- um, and one in Carlton was seven point four million. That was a complete HVAC system replacement. The one in Windsor High School has had several items performed to it. A new boiler has already been put in, a new chiller has already been placed in, and several new other mechanical parts have been replaced that reduces that amount lower and lower. With Carisville, you have two sides of the school, the sa- um, the school that was renovated and the side that, um, was new. With the side that was renovated, that side has a boiler that's in it that's approximately thirty-eight years old. Based off of the asset schedule, the boiler should be replaced after thirty years. Now, the boiler is thirty-eight, so it pops up on, it pops up on the radar as it needs to be replaced soon. The boiler is still going on, but these are the items that the school board asked me to look at that, so we're not waiting until the last minute to identify, identify these areas early. And that's what we built the asset schedule off of. Identifying these items early, as we did with the, uh, with the Carisville system and the Windsor High School, so that we can start getting in front of it, start being more proactive than reactive. That's why that system is three hundred and thirty thousand. It's only one air handling unit. And once again, it's still moving forward, but it is, it does need to be replaced.
Okay. So leading to the next, I'm sorry, line item. Replacing or upgrading the HVAC system at Windsor High School for one point seven million. Again, with that one, I'm pretty sure the justification would be the same thing you just mentioned. However, I'm asking these questions because this is one of the two that is tied with the disaster recovery generator, which I'll get to in just a second. Is that HVAC system in danger of a catastrophic failure?
The system at Windsor High School has already, I should say, I'm not gonna say already went through, uh, failure, but parts of that system has already failed and has been replaced. Um, the office staff can tell you from Windsor High School that the office was out of commission for quite some time. That was just repaired. And right near the end of school, there was other portions of that system that failed. Uh, we were just happy that the kids were out, but still the staff had to work through those in, um, conditions. So those portions have been repaired. So once again, if we start to really dig into the, the, the details of it, the one point seven is probably gonna be reduced just based off of twenty days ago, when that system finally came up and running again.
Okay. And moving to the disaster recovery generator, and believe it or not, I'm actually getting to a point. The disaster, disaster recovery generator for a hundred and forty thousand. Uh, we've already discussed this, but I'm gonna ask you the same questions again for transparency and clarity. What would be the main purpose of that generator in and of itself?
All right. I'm gonna, uh, lean back for Mr. Eric Cooperator to come to the front for me. And Mr. Cooperator is gonna go into the details of what we use for disaster recovery generator. We have always had one, but we was at, uh, the existing one was at OCO. So I will go into detail about why we didn't just bring the one from OCO to New CO. And that's because, uh, once, first of all, it's twenty years old. And then we're looking at all of the vendor quotes to move that generator. It was between sixty and seventy-five to sixty to eighty thousand dollars to move the old generator. So we decided not to move that generator, leave it there. But Mr. Cooperator, can you go into a little bit more detail about, uh, why we need this disaster recovery generator?
Yes, sir. So the generator's primary-
So the generator's primary purpose is to maintain the backup systems for the entire division. Um, about 15 years ago, when I started, we were over near, actually right behind this building, and we ran off of the generator that was there at Central Office. Um, we then moved over to Smitha High School, and we've been utilizing their generator. And now we're moving to a location that doesn't have one. What the purpose of that system is, is all of our systems back up to what's referred to as our disaster recovery center. That's our student information system, our authentication systems, our databases, all that sort of stuff. Just in case something catastrophic were to occur at the courthouse, we would not lose data into, so we keep them in two physically separate, uh, locations inside the county. Um, we have had to utilize that system a couple of times when the wires have been cut from between here and, um, the courthouse. What we have to do is then fire up our backups and get them live for a while. And then when the wires repaired, we, uh, take our backups and make them the live systems again. It has some off time, but it's not, you know, complete loss of data. Um, those systems are a significant expense, probably 200 to $300,000. They do not like it when the power immediately shuts off. We do have battery backups, but those are limited capacity. So you need something that, um, the battery backups keep it running for the period of time it takes for the generator to start up if power were to be lost.
Thank you, Mr. Cooperator.
Yes, sir.
So hypothetically speaking, let's say we get hit with a major hurricane. I hope we don't, but let's say it does happen. Um, it's happened before. Holloway County's lost power for several days to weeks. If that were to happen, um, and this generator was not approved, could there, could there be a potential data loss and disruption of education?
If the data, if the destruction were that severe.
We're just talking about power loss. That's it. I'm not talking about physical damage.
So we're just losing power?
Correct.
Yes, um, without a backup generator, the potential for this system, if it suddenly loses power and cuts off, the, the system does not like being shut down that way. Um, every time that it happens, there is the strong potential for data corruption. The reality is, we also back it up off-site. Our student information system is backed up off-site to the cloud. But that is a significant expense, or significant time investment in order to restore that. We could recover it, but you're talking about a major financial impact.
And how long would it take to recover if it was off-site?
Um, if the disaster recovery center were to fail and it was unrecoverable and the courthouse, we're talking weeks. But it's recoverable over ti- it's not complete loss. It's recoverable, but we're talking weeks, if not longer, before this, um, primary system, such as the student information system, was fully able to be utilized again.
So you're talking weeks to possibly longer to do recovery?
Well, we would have to, uh, obtain hardware. We would then have to restore data. And then you'd have to verify all the data, figure out where it was the last time it backed up. You're talking a significant time impact.
So based on that, how, how long of a time would you anticipate disruption in education? I'll put you on the spot here.
Before I could get the student information system back up, which is not necessarily a disruption to education, that's why I wanted to hesitate on the answer. I would hope I could do it. I mean, if I called in every favor from every vendor I had out there, I might be able to do it in 10 days. And that's 15-hour days.
Okay. Now, for this particular generator, disaster recovery generator, uh, we did talk about fuel sources.
Yes, we did.
Um, one of the things that me personally, I would recommend is if there is a natural gas line that could be tied into, that would be a continual source of fuel for a generator versus, you know, an above-ground propane tank or, you know, a diesel fuel tank, which both have to be filled. Has any of that been identified yet?
The gas line is at the road, right along the road in front of the, um, front of the location. It was always there, it was just tied to the old Hardy when it was there. That line has since been replaced. The gas line is still at the road, so we'd have to go back and reconnect it. So I would have to get quotes from that. So I would have to deliver quotes to you concerning the natural gas and the, uh, diesel fuel, and then look at the cost comparison.
Right. So basically, that would be an easy fix with, uh, VNG. As far as the natural gas goes.
Yes.
All right. So with all of those questions, since we're looking at replacing the HVAC at Windsor High School for 1.7 million or purchasing a disaster recovery generator for 140,000, they're both ranked the same. This question is to each of you, which one would you choose?
Well, because I've been to Windsor High School several times and and I would love to keep Ms. Carroll and her staff happy. Uh, sitting here right now, I'm going to say that both are very important. And, um, I would say the upgrade the HVAC at Windsor High School. I'm going to make sure that I say that.
Mr. Cooperator?
I believe that my choice would also be to follow Dr. Coleman's lead.
That's a very good political answer.
Thank you, sir.
You, you see what I'm getting at, though?
Right. Trying to sap between which one.
One of them's going to have to go away.
Right. And at the same time, um, with that thought pattern in place, you, you never know. You never know that the cost comparison, as I stated, the, the HVAC systems for Windsor High School, just three weeks ago, we've replaced a lot of items. That 1.7 could be reduced incredibly right now.
Right. And don't, don't get me wrong, I support both of them.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's all I've got for that.
Right.
Thank you for not asking me that question, Mr. Wooster.
Anyone else? I will say that it's pretty surprising to me that the new Westside School, which is something that we've been banging the drum about for the better part of two years, if not three, about needing to replace this school being a top priority, just barely made the list. Um, not only have we banged the drum up here, but we banged that drum with the board of supervisors and vocalized to that group of people that we need to make efforts and start planning now to replace this school. It's the oldest school we've got, so. Everything's a priority. And then it's interesting to me how replacing a roof on a school that's as old as this one just in my mind, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Everybody's got their own set of goggles on how to do this. It's just, that's just my two cents on the matter. I would say that, uh, we take what we got, re-rack it and stack it, clean it up a little bit, add those things off on the side, put them on top. Don't rank them, just annotate them as something that's been verbally agreed upon. And be prepared to talk to it in a couple of weeks at the
Yes, sir.
Board of Supervisors. Everybody agree with that? I mean, it's, it's, I, I would say that the county's probably going to have information that we aren't privy to yet. They've certainly, I know that they're working on some of this stuff. Uh, I'm pretty sure they're working on figuring out how to take out a bond for Westside. Um, or at least thinking about it, so. Who knows how next week, or the October 7th turns out. So I think we've got a good start. If we could get Dr. Coleman to kind of clean it up and be ready to present it and talk to it in a joint session, we'd be in a good spot. And certainly ahead of where we have been in years past.
Absolutely, absolutely, without a doubt.
Is that agreeable with everyone up here? Mr. Cunningham, sir?
Mr. Chair, I do believe we need to do a 4A and a 4B tonight to help Dr. Coleman, or, or have we already decided, uh, the A and B?
It's not my decision to make, it's, it's the board.
Yeah, we, we've got to do it as a board.
Okay. Let's, let's do it. I think we did that last year. We had an A and a B on a couple of items. So let's just say, by a show of hands, who wants the, um, the big one here, the Windsor High School HVAC? By a show of hands, who wants that 4A? Okay, there you go, sir. 4B is the generator.
Yeah, Dr. Coleman did mention it may not be that expensive. You know, it may actually be $140,000 cheaper than we give both.
Sure.
Absolutely.
So, and I don't think we'd be able to do that if we said that the, the recovery generator is, is number one. Because if we got that cheaper, it would not pay for an HVAC system.
That is correct.
So.
Okay, we're good? I don't think this needs to be an action item, does it?
It, normally we, we do that, this is an action item.
I move to approve our five-to-10-year capital improvement plan as presented, with the exception of listing Windsor HVAC as 4A and disaster recovery generator as 4B. Um, and be prepared to present it to the board of supervisors in joint session.
Yes, sir.
At a date to be determined.
At a date to be determined, October 7th.
Missing anything, Doc?
We are missing nothing, and to your point, we are far ahead of where we've been in the past.
Yeah, we have, there's worse things we could be arguing about in September. There's a motion.
And a second.
Who is the second? I'm sorry.
I did.
Mr. Colick.
I second.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Colick?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mrs. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Wooster?
Yes.
And Mr. Marsh.
Yes, motion passes. Dr. Coleman, I appreciate you working on that. I know that you've been juggling phone calls and emails with five people for some time. Kudos to you for putting up with five individuals that see everything different.
And for the record, Mr. Chair, if I may, we will share this with County Administrator Robertson as well, just so that he's aware of the action the board took this evening.
Perfect, thanks. And Mrs. Whitlow, could you, when we get done with it, hang in on board, Doc?
I'm working on it right now.
You're awesome, thank you, ma'am. Okay. 14-7, Special Education Advisory Committee. Ms. McNair's been sitting back there patiently waiting forever.
All right, good evening, Chair Marsh, members of the board, Dr. Kramer. I believe the first thing we have for you tonight, and I, I'm noticing now it says 25-25 school year. That should say 25-26 school year. Um, that is our CAC. Um, our CAC information, and includes our board as well as our schedule for the year. Um, this is for approval. And I do want to point out, however, um, a small, uh, plug for our first meeting of CAC. It's going to be September 27th. And this time, we're actually doing a back-to-school bash for, um, students with disabilities and their families. Uh, we're going to have a vendor fair as well as, um, a silent, uh, touch-a-truck event and other activities for kiddos. So just a plug out there. Notice that's the first CAC meeting we have at the end of this month. Um, and the rest, uh, is there for your approval. Happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Ms. McNair, is this something that you'd be willing to look at and see if maybe that fit in?
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. I, I can't see, I'm thinking.
Mr. Uzle had his, did we hear where Mr. Uzle spoke?
Oh, yes, yes, yeah.
I think this is kind of right up his alley.
We, I'm happy to reach out. We've reached out to several, um, vendors within the community. Still waiting to hear back from a few, but yeah, absolutely.
He's still back there hiding, too. You got you, sir.
Got him.
Okay, it's an action item? I think so, yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Special Education Advisory Committee board members and meeting schedule as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Colick?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mrs. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Wooster?
Yes.
And Mr. Marsh.
Yes, motion passes. And we'll see you in September 27th.
Cool.
Back-to-school bash.
Yes.
Carrollton Elementary, 2 to 4 p.m.
Yes.
You got the next one, too? Over to you, ma'am.
All right. So next we have our Childfind event schedule. Childfind is, however, an ongoing process throughout the school year. Currently, we're conducting kindergarten screenings as an example. Uh, these, however, are the actual events that we're hosting for the fall and the spring, both at the Carrollton Elementary School and Windsor Elementary School. Again, this is, or this is just for information. Um, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Question, questions, comments? Do you usually have a lot of turnout for this?
Uh, not very many, no. And I do believe it's because we have continuing conversation with early intervention. We receive a lot of our, um, students who are in need of screenings through that process. We also conduct kindergarten screenings currently, the first 60 days of the school year. Um, and then again, we, we, we hear from families throughout the year. Um, and we, and bring those students in through child study processes. So this is an event, but we're constantly, um, screening and looking for kiddos who might have disabilities that we need to address.
I'll, I'll give you a shout-out, and I know I did it once before, but the last time I was at one of your CAC meetings, I called my best friend who has a special needs daughter and told her about some of the stuff that you had cooking.
Yes.
She was blown away and impressed. So I, I think you guys are leading the charge here in Holloway with
Yes, thank you.
The special needs, so kudos to you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Getz?
All right, good evening. Um, tonight, Ms. Loud and I are going to share, um, SOL pass rates. Um, we will come back, um, again, once we have more, um, a definitive answer as far as the accountability. Uh, but tonight, we do have SOL pass rates. We want to begin sharing those, um, and so we're going to get started.
Okay, so first, just a reminder with the change in accountability. So accreditation is now solely based on compliance. It's about ratios, it's about staffing, the instructional program, things like that. So the school performance and support framework is what, is how school performance is measured and compared across schools and across divisions. So the schools are going to earn ratings of on-track, off-track, distinguished, or needs intensive support. Um, those were not in, in order, I'm sorry about that. Distinguished, on-track, off-track, and needs intensive support. Uh, it is based on multiple components. We talked about those, uh, last school year. Um, and because there's so many components and they are fairly complex, there's no final data yet on a lot of those. So those should be available by the end of September if VDOE sticks to their timeline. Um, so I should be back next month with some, uh, accountability results for you.
Okay, so first, let's take a look at chronic absenteeism. Um, and as you see, all the schools are listed. We have data from, um, three years. Um, and as you can see, we really have made some gains in, um, reducing chronic absenteeism. Um, and particularly, I want to give a little shout-out to Windsor High School. Um, they have made just, uh, such an impact on reducing their chronic absenteeism. And it has been with a lot of hard work and a lot of effort, um, from that staff to, to see that number go from 20% to 12%. So now we're going to get into the, the pass rates. Um, so these are aggregate results, and they're comparing our performance to the performance of the entire state. So as you can see, we were above the state in, uh, in terms of pass rates in all of our areas. So even though I think Dr. Kramer said we weren't going to compare ourselves to other people, we are going to do.
people, we are going to do that tonight.
Just a little bit.
Just a little bit.
And, and just to, oh, yep, go ahead, Ms. Marsh.
I've said this before, but.
Go back.
It's worth stating again, I fiddle around on the Department of Education site a lot.
Yes.
I think it's an illness. Specifically, the amount of money that school divisions across Commonwealth are spending per pupil, and it's worth pointing out that even though Islewhite is above average there in every category, if you rack and stack how divisions across the Commonwealth spend money per pupil, we're way at the bottom. So.
Yes.
You folks are literally doing a lot more than most with much less than the majority.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out. So let's take a look at how we compare to the schools in our region. So if you take a look at the top line, you will see where we rank out of the other schools in our, our region. And so for reading, we are five out of fifteen, writing, four out of fifteen, math, four out of fifteen, science, seven out of fifteen, and history, five out of fifteen. So again, those, those, those look pretty good, and, and if you see below, those are the other divisions in our region. The, the, the line below where it says the difference between Islewhite County Schools in the top ranked, so that's looking at, for example, in reading, we are ten percentage points below the highest in our region, and seven below in writing, six in math, eleven in science, and six in history, just for comparison sakes.
So you're comparing Islewhite to all the divisions in the below?
That is correct.
Got it. Entertain me, who's doing the best?
Who's doing the best?
Yeah.
The Cozen is really high up there.
They are, but it does depend on the subject area.
Yes.
If you want to know who's on the bottom, you got to look it up.
We're not going to share that.
We're not doing that.
Yes.
Okay, so these are the overall pass rates for the past three years in, for the division in all five subject areas. So as you can see, reading, we went down just a little bit from seventy-nine to seventy-eight. We did go up in science. That was due in large part to the great increases that our middle schools had with eighth grade science. They really, really focused in on that and worked hard there, and then we stayed the same in all of the other areas. One of the things I do want to point out, though, is we had new standards last year, last spring, for reading and math tests. So historically, we've had a dip in SOL pass rates every time there's a new set of standards, and we did not see the, the kind of dip that we have historically seen this year. And so I really do want to call out the work of our coordinators, our content area coordinators. They worked on curriculum assessments, they worked hand in hand with our teachers to make sure that their, that what they were teaching was aligned with these new standards, and so they really did work very hard with that, so I just wanted to kind of call them out a little bit.
And I do have a question.
Oh, please, Mr. Colick, go, yes.
So we're seeing like in English for reading, we've got a seventy-eight pass rate?
Correct.
So that's twenty-two, twenty-two percent, that's percentage, correct?
It is, yes.
Okay, so twenty-two percent don't pass, how do we remediate those that don't pass?
Yeah, it depends on the level, quite honestly. We have extensive remediation plans in place in every school. For example, in elementary school, if you are not mastering the reading standards, we have Title I reading intervention that you go to every single day. Same thing for math, it looks a little different, similar, but a little different structure in middle and high school, and actually, next month, I will look to bring some more specifics to share with you about how we do remediate our students, but every school has an, has a very extensive remediation plan in place for students who are not mastering the standards.
Okay, so one question I'll probably have next month is how do we measure the remediation success?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
So, Mr. Colick?
We, so we, I've asked her this question before, and you got a pretty good response. You know, you just answered it, really, so if twenty-two percent of the kids don't pass, but we've got a ninety-six percent graduation rate, somebody's hustling behind the scenes to make sure these kids get out the door with a certificate.
They absolutely are. They, they do a lot of remediation at the, at the high school level, so that students who don't pass on their first attempt can retake it, and that's what this is representing. This is first attempt for the high school tests, so the, the passing tests later on, they aren't necessarily reflected here, so.
Great, thank you.
And keep in mind, at our, at, at our elementary, middle school levels, they can, they take the test, they can do an expedited retake if they score within a certain percentage, but in high school, you can have multiple attempts to pass a test. Okay, so it does look different. Remediation is in place, it just looks a little different.
And if I understand some of, some of the changes that the DOE's had, last year, there was a lot more emphasis on growth, and they've shifted some of that focus. You covered that a few months ago. There's less emphasis on growth.
We did.
And more emphasis on pass or fail.
Yeah, in the, in the previous accountability system, elementary and middle schools for reading and math had a combined rate, which was their pass rate plus students who failed who showed, who showed sufficient growth. So that was their combined rate. This year, with the School Performance and Support Framework, it's a mastery index. So growth is still in there, but it's not, it's split out, and it's a smaller portion.
Okay, so let's take a look at our reading pass rates, and, and I would like to point out, in elementary school, it was our first year with a new curriculum, so sometimes you do see a little, a little dip when you are implementing something brand new. I, I do anticipate that that will be better. We also have, you know, new tests that have, the, the reading tests, I will say, are probably the ones that have become the most rigorous, and so we were actually pretty pleased when you look across the board at the results with the more rigorous testing.
Okay. So here you have your math pass rates by school. So six of our schools actually increased, and then two, two of them went down slightly, and then Windsor Elementary stayed exactly the same. So, you know, it, we're pretty, pretty even, but there were some, there was some variability. There were some really nice gains, but there was some, some drops that we're addressing.
Science pass rates, as Ms. Loud mentioned, we did see some nice gains in middle school, but this does, this is an area that we are continuing to focus on. We know it, we recognize that it's an area that we need to grow in, we are working hard behind the scenes to put things in place and to make sure that the resources that we need to teach, because it's not just, you know, it's application of science, so it, it is rigorous, and so our students definitely need more practice in that, and so that's what we're working on, is trying to make sure we have the materials, especially for our elementary, and also that they have the time, because what tends to happen in elementary is reading in particularly, in particular, take priority, and so when something kind of falls short, it tends to be science and history, and reading and math get a lot of the focus. And so we have really worked on the master schedules in elementary school to make sure there is a lot of time that is there for science and history, and you must stop and you must teach when it's that time. So those are some of the things with our high school in particular, it's really about alignment, rigor of what we're teaching, and then just consistency with staffing as well.
One of the things that I kind of think about is, I know that we came up short-staffed this year, I know that you had to combine some classes and you've got bigger class sizes, we spoke about this a little bit earlier.
Yes.
My fear is that because that time gets constrained, the student-teacher ratios, my fear is that those numbers decrease the coming year.
I, I am worried, especially at Westside. We have very high class sizes at Westside this year, and so, yeah, you're right, we'll see, we'll see, I mean, we're going to support them as, as best we can, but their class sizes are high. When you look at compared to the other schools. Okay, and history?
So in history, we saw much the same in terms of the impact that sometimes happens when the focus is on reading and math. So five of our schools did increase with history, but we did have three that, that decreased, so really focusing in on those master schedules and making sure that that time is held to teach the, to teach the content.
We also are doing some things like, you know, obviously, we can see that Carsville is killing it with fourth grade history standards, so we've actually reached out to them and to Windsor Elementary and said, hey, you're doing a bang-up job, can you share some things with our other teachers? So we are, we're doing things like that, we're using our other teachers to actually help teach and provide staff development for others. Okay, so let's take a look in just comparison of pre-pandemic to how we are doing now. If you look at the first two columns on the left there, those are state pass rates compared to, if you, well, if you look at the state pass rate and then you look at our division pass rate, you can kind of see, if you go across all the way to the right, you can see that we are exceeding, as Ms. Loud already stated that, we are exceeding the state in every category. When you look at how we are doing compared to how we did pre-pandemic, we, in some areas, we're, we're doing pretty well, there's other areas, we're still, we are still making gains, we're still trying to catch up, but if you look at where, when we came back in twenty-twenty, twenty-one, oh, yeah, I mean, it's, it's much, much better, but there still are gains to be made, and, and let me say, the standards have changed, the tests have changed, so we're not exactly comparing apples to apples when we look at those pass rates, but just to give you an idea of where we stand, and if you look at the state, we are doing, we are doing well. Do we have room to improve? Absolutely. It's a continual process, and, you know, one of the things that we battle, it's turnover in staff. If you look at schools that have more consistent teachers every year teaching the same content, they perform better. When you have schools that have more of a turnover, it is harder, it is more of a struggle. So that's one of the things we know in our department that we have to work with. Do you have any other questions for us?
Okay. You're it.
Okay, I was going to save my questions for last, but I'm assuming nobody else has any.
Okay.
All right, looking at this, and I know, you know, the whole methodology changed in how to figure this, when you're going through the slides and you're looking at a regional comparison, truth be known, that, to me, is irrelevant comparing it to the rest of the region. My main focus is going to be on Islewhite County Schools. With that being said, every other slide, these numbers are in percentages, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm just going to skip right over to the reading SOL pass rates. Looking at this, yes, we are above the state. Now, maybe I'm interpreting this differently, I'm not sure. If I am, please correct me. We have dropped one percent overall from last year.
Correct.
Okay, that's not bad. That's not bad at all. We're, let's see, Carrollton is up, Carsville's up, I'm not going to go through all this. The main thing I want to get to is the overall. I'm not going to tie everybody's time up. What I'm mainly looking at on the pandemic recovery progress, this is what actually concerns me. For the English reading, all right, in twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, state level was seventy-eight, if I'm reading this correct. Twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five, state level actually dropped to seventy-four, which is down four percent. But if you look at the division, in twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, which is considered pre-COVID, for English reading, we were at eighty-four percent. Now, that did drop during, during COVID, twenty-twenty, twenty-one, it was down to seventy-three, there was an uptick, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three, up to seventy-eight, twenty-three, twenty-four is up to seventy-nine, but now we've got dropped back down to seventy-eight. If you look at the original pre-COVID, that's down six percent from pre-COVID rate, uh, pass rates. For English writing, it was seventy-eight for pre-COVID. I'm glad to say that this year, it's eighty-two percent, which is up four percent. But history and social science, that was eighty percent pre-COVID, we're that, we're at seventy-three now, which is lower than pre-COVID, but we went from sixty-five to seventy-two to seventy-one to seventy-three. So from twenty-one, twenty-two to now, it seems like we're pretty flat. You know, not much of a gain, you're looking at one percent, two percent, that's it. For math, pre-COVID was eighty-seven. Of course, it dropped down to sixty-one, it came to seventy-three, seventy-seven, up to eighty. We are still at eighty, which I'm glad to see, however, that's still a seven percent decrease from pre-COVID. And then with science, you've got, pre-COVID was eighty-three percent. It seems like it's remained pretty close to the same through the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, running between sixty-seven, seventy-one, sixty-seven, seventy-one, but we're seventy-three now, so it's an increase, but from pre-COVID, we're still down ten percent. The reason I'm going through all this is I'm looking for a solution or an answer. Why do you think we have these decreases now post-COVID? Why are we not seeing increases? And what can we do as a division to get these students to where they were pre-COVID?
Yeah, I would like to, and I'm going to let Ms. Loud, but here are my thoughts on this. I would ask that you take a look at where the state is, because, yes, I understand what you're saying about pre-pandemic, but we were working off of different standards and different assessments. The standards and the assessments are more rigorous than they were pre-COVID, so I would ask that you look also at where we are in the state, because if you look at where the state is when they were pre-COVID and now post-COVID, and then look at where we are now, we are, we are doing well, I mean, do we need to do better? Yes, absolutely, but you're not really, when we look at pre-COVID to now, it's not really apples to apples, because the tests and the standards are different, it's not the same. Okay? And then the other thing is what I mentioned before about the teacher turnover. When you lose teachers and you get, a lot of times you're losing veteran teachers, and then you might not be replacing them with veteran teachers, it does take time to get those teachers to learn, to teach at the same level of rigor, to learn how to assess, to interpret the data, to apply that to their instruction. It's, it's not just equal, as you lose one, you get one, and they're exactly the same. And so I know we harp a lot, and you, y'all are probably tired of hearing me say, teacher pay, but it does matter, and we want to keep our very strong veteran teachers, and I think you will see, and, and I'm going to use an example, I'm going to shout out Windsor High School. I'm going to shout out Windsor High School. Windsor High School has very little teacher turnover, and they are doing amazing. Their teachers are there. It's consistent. The teachers know how to teach. They know how to disaggregate their data. They know how to remediate. I think that's what you can see when you have consistent staffing. I'll let Ms. Loud, if she has anything to add.
No, I would agree. And one thing I think to look at is, how did we compare with the state in 2018, '19? And then how did we compare with the state in '24, '25? So, for example, with history, both the division and the state were 80% pass rates. But now, the state is only at 66, and now we are above where the state is. So, are we at the levels that we were pre-pandemic? No, we're not. And, you know, for all of the reasons that Mrs. Getz just said. But I think when you compare division to state in 18, '19, and then division to state in '24, '25, we are getting there, and we are surpassing that comparison in, in three, at least three areas, so.
I mean, I can see the comparison to the state pass rates. I'm the type of person that I just, I don't want to focus on state pass rates. I want to go well beyond that, and I'm sure you feel the same way. When did the new guidelines go into effect as far as what you were just discussing a few seconds ago?
Depends on the subject.
Yeah, so, new standards went into effect this past year for reading and math. We had new standards in science last year.
For the '23, '24?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, '23, '24. And then history, the standards really haven't changed all that much. We're still giving 2015 tests based on 2015 standards. We expect those to come out this spring.
There, yeah, there will be new.
So, they, they were in effect last year?
Which ones?
For which area?
You said the history?
So, history, history is actually the only area where the standards haven't changed since before the pandemic.
Has not changed?
Has not changed.
Yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
The other changes, were they in place last year?
The test, hold on. So, new standard, so, the new standards were assessed in the '24, '25 school year for reading and math.
Okay.
And new standards were assessed in '23, '24 for science.
Okay. So, what I'm doing is I'm comparing the '23, '24, and '24, '25. Not much of a change regardless of what standards were in place. Actually, English reading went down 1%. English writing maintained an 82. History and social sciences maintained 73%. Math maintained 80%, and science gained 2%. So, I just, I don't mean to be a Debbie Downer. I would expect more for the students. So, I'm just trying to figure out what we can do as a divi, school division to increase these students' capabilities.
I think we could start by giving them more pay and more teachers.
It's, I mean, staffing, the fluctuations in staffing. When you have, you know, 10 new teachers every year, it impacts, it impacts your scores. And, and, and Mr. Worcester, I'm, I'm not, am I satisfied with where we are? Absolutely not. I mean, I'm not like, oh, my gosh, we don't have anything else to do. But I'm, I'm, I'm encouraged by what I see and in the direction that we are going. So, I, I feel like we, we have plans in place. We're implementing plans. There are many, many factors to student achievement. But the most important thing is that teacher in that classroom every single day. We want highly qualified teachers who are certified, who are here consistently. That's, that's going to help us tremendously.
I have nothing else.
Okay.
And just for, one of the things I'd asked about one of your upcoming presentations was how many junior teachers we have this coming year. You said we've got 44 in the 0-3-year mark. So, that's a lot of junior.
A lot of new teachers.
Teachers.
Yes.
That are learning how to teach.
Yes.
So.
Yes, and they're oftentimes replacing veteran teachers. So, it is a lot of catch-up. It is.
May I, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I don't have anything to add. I think both you ladies did an outstanding job of making some very nuanced and complicated matters, for lack of a better term, understandable for, I think, laypersons who are looking at this. I would say, Mr. Worcester, thank you very much for your questions, and I don't think you're Debbie Downer, but appreciate you pushing back, and I think Ms. Getz stated it correctly, and that is, we should never be content with where we are. We should always be, you know, making gains and striving for better for our students. So, I think we would all agree with you there. But I do think it's important that we look at comparisons. We have to compare ourselves to the region. We have to compare ourselves to the state. And I think Ms. Getz stated it well as in her statement, and that is, looking at the single greatest impact on student achievement, and research bears this out, and I think these ladies would agree with me here, is a quality teacher. I mean, you have to have top-tier teachers. We can do all the things in the world that we are doing and training and, and providing professional development and learning, et cetera, but we need top-tier teachers, and we need experienced teachers. And I'll tell you, this is the first time since I've been here, I've said this to my colleagues on our staff quite often. It's the first time I'm more concerned with staffing than I am with the budget. Never thought we'd have any issue, but we are now losing teachers in Isle of Wight, and we're losing teachers for one single reason, and that is, our pay is disproportionately lower than most of our neighboring jurisdictions. So, you talk about what we can do. I think the chair stated it very well. We are going to have to address that, and we're, you know, implementing a compensation study, so we'll be talking about that. But let's be absolutely candid. Having quality people in our division is essential, and that is something we're going to have to focus on, because again, for the first time since I've been here at least, we're beginning to lose teachers, and we're losing them because of pay. So, thank you for the question, and I'll leave it at that.
Thanks, ladies. CTE, Ms. White.
Welcome, Ms. White. It's your first opportunity to present to the board.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
No pressure.
None at all. None at all. Well, good evening, Board Chair Marsh, Vice Chair Worcester, members, Mr. Colley, Ms. Perkins, Mr. Cunningham, as well as Dr. Kramer. First, may I say, as it is my first appearance before the board, thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to join Isle of Wight County Schools and to serve its students and broader community. I'm incredibly excited about the things that are already in place and how, the direction that the division is going. So, thank you for that. I am here tonight to discuss and give you a report on the CTE, our Career and Technical Education Program, from the 2024, 2025 school year. I always like to start with our outcomes because the students are why we are here, and it is our mission certainly to have them college career and life ready. So, one of the first things we would like to highlight that we finished this spring was the Second Annual CTE Reverse Job Fair. So, for those that may be unfamiliar with what this event is, our industry partners come into our buildings and have an opportunity to see what our students are doing on a day-to-day basis. We had 42 industry partners in attendance this year, and that was, I believe it was eight partner increase from the previous year. So, we are looking forward to see what happens as we move into the '25, '26 school year to enhance opportunities for our students. Our partners that came in gave us a lot of positive feedback, telling us that it was wonderful to see a school division where we were investing in our students and the power of career and technical education. Our CTE Signing Day event was also a huge success at multiple sites, so thank you all who went to all of the locations alongside us. We were able to celebrate 24 students who signed commitments to local businesses. Also, we had Smithfield Rotary who awarded eight honorarium scholarships to our students, and each of those were in the amount of $500 for, those are a wonderful start for our students and their careers moving forward. An update on the Isle Maritime Trades Academy, which is the Lab School Partnership with Camp Community College, Huntington Ingalls, and Old Dominion University. We opened our doors eight short days ago on September 2nd. We currently are serving 18 students in that lab school. A few of the things that we would like to note, we've been very, very busy over the course of the last year with planning, as well as the summer, right up until our, our start date, was the installation of 10 new welding machines right outside of Smithfield High School. We are very excited about that. The electrical classroom also has experienced some modernization as well. Interactive whiteboards helping to enhance, excuse me, the technology in the classroom, as well as seating arrangements and other items. Going back to the importance of our teachers and really investing in our teachers so that they can then further invest in our students, we certainly want to highlight the high-quality professional development that our instructional staff was able to attend over the course of that year. We had seven total instructors who were sent to trainings. Each of these individuals, if we kind of go down the list with our welding and cosmetology, their focus was specifically in OSHA training. Over in our agricultural land lab, we were able to send those individuals for Virginia Association of Agricultural Education. Ms. Finch in Engineering went for MTI and 3E accreditation training, and Chef Horn and Chef Hagan in our Culinary Arts Program, received training on Now Pro Start instruction. And I do want to highlight that because I'm incredibly impressed with the willingness of the staff to grow and really network for opportunities on behalf of our students. And a few slides down, you will note specifically culinary had some incredible progress based on the fact that Chef Horn and Hagan and Isle of Wight County Schools were able to provide them this opportunity. Just to review, from the '23, '24 to '24, '25 school year, exams and credentials offered, just to be clear on what these numbers are, we have the ability to assess in many different areas. This specific number is the actual different number of assessments that were taken in a specific school year. So, in the '23, '24 school year, there were 17 different credentials or exams tested, and in the '24, '25, a total of 19. I will go down to the number of attempts that, the number of attempts, we do have some students. This is not necessarily an unduplicated number. We do have students who may test in more than one area in a given school year. We certainly want to highlight that average pass rate. It was a 2% increase from the year before. Our CTE completers, for those that may be unfamiliar with what that means, that's certainly a number that we want to continue to push to higher numbers, which means higher credentialing. Kids that are CTE completers had a sequential course, so, for example, welding 1, 2, engineering 1, 2, and then they also passed the industry credential that was relevant to that specific field. So, very pleased with that increase there as well, and something we will continue to push. What we have on the next few slides is a breakdown of the business courses that we currently offer, excuse me, not simply business, but CTE courses, broken down by category in Isle of Wight County Schools. Along with the percent pass rate, you will see there as well the specific courses that those exams are tied to. So, for example, we may have multiple courses that have students participate in a single exam, such as the Microsoft PowerPoint examination, very top line. We have, I believe it's three different courses that offer students that specific assessment. In our industrial trades, we certainly want to highlight the success of students and staff on the MTI Level 1 certification. As you can see there as well, that is offered to students across multiple classrooms. And if you take those numbers and average it together, that total percent passing for all students who took that test was an 84% as well. In Health and Human Services, I think one thing that is important to, to kind of point out here is the continued forward motion in offering our students kind of the latest and greatest as we continue to keep up with what is high-demand, high-wage fields. The patient care technician fields that you see there, those were new assessments in the last school year for students. And the students were very successful under the care of the instructors that were in that classroom. So, that certainly speaks to the knowledge and expertise was there. And again, that was a brand-new examination in addition. We saw something very similar in the Culinary Arts, as I mentioned earlier, with the Pro Start training and professional development that instructors participated in. There are also three new assessments last school year, the two Pro Starts and the Leadership Assessment. And if you look across the board at the percent passing there, the students were highly successful in that examination as well. So, kudos to the students and the instructors in that area as well. Also, want to make sure that we demonstrate how our students were performing in our Army JROTC. The ASVAB is your top line. That is, our students that are currently in CTE that take ASVAB, of course, we do have other students not enrolled in specific CTEs that test, but these are specific to CTE. And we also have cohorts of students with JROTC that participate in Leadership Assessment. We always look for opportunities to highlight our students, and I'm sure you guys have seen these faces before, but we would be remiss if we did not, again, have the opportunity to highlight some of the accomplishments. Our students and staff put in a lot of hard work, and this is the reason that we are here. As you all know, we have one world championship group, which are our KidWinn students up there top center. I believe we had three different groups that made national-level appearances at VLA for the first time ever. We had our Pro Start Region 2 winners. Those are the students who also were participating in those assessments. And we had one representative from HOSA, and I believe that was also a first-time appearance. So, there were some really great things happening in our classrooms. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer.
Comments from the board?
How does the enrollment look this year compared to last year? Pretty much straight across the board with the CTE programs.
I have not looked at the current year enrollment as that compares to last year enrollment at this time, but I can certainly pull that for you and get it to you very shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Thanks, Ms. White.
Thank you all.
Okay, that takes us to 15-4.
Good evening. I'm here to present the Annual Professional Development Update. This is our second year with, if you remember, we have an initiative with Wallace where they provided a grant for two years to support with Leadership Pipeline. On the left picture, that is the cohort. Remember, we are in the cohort with Franklin and Pecosin. We meet annually and working on our strategic plans within the Wallace Work Plan. And then to the right was our first Isle Lead Cohort. These are teacher leaders who are looking or are currently in a master's program towards administration. So, this was their first year. It was a wonderful group. This group of Isle Lead also mentor our Year 2 teachers. So, after they complete the Isle Lead, or the, excuse me, the new teacher cohort with us for their first year with us, they are then again supported with strong veteran teachers in their second year, and that is given by our Alles.
May I interrupt you for one second? Would you just remind them that these are via grants, the Wallace?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, we're in Year 2 of that grant. This summer, leadership met at the Smithfield Center because we were fortunate with the Wallace Grant to provide us that opportunity. We met over three days and focused on We met over three days and focused on these topics. I do want to point out that our coordinators and coaches provided the professional development within these sessions. We are really looking at current high-quality PD that we need to give our leaders who then can support their teachers. So, you'll see the explicit instruction is a focus for this year, and of course, AI. We're doing a lot of work with that. And then when our new teachers came back, we had two weeks of strong professional development for all teachers. We gave almost full day with our instructional assistants. They have been seeking some professional developments. We wanted to give them strong, high-quality behavior PD. We partnered with T-TAC from William &amp; Mary. They came in for free and provided that professional development to all of our instructional assistants. And then we continued with sessions provided by coordinators, coaches, and looking at behavior, technology, and classroom management. These are some ongoing professional learning opportunities that we're going to be taking advantage going into this year. I do just want to point out a couple things. You'll see in the third bullet point instructional rounds, this is our new learning walk process that we implemented last year. We had the high-quality instruction training that a group of us went, got the training, came back. We trained our administrators, and now all administrators will be instructing these learning walks or instructional rounds. And I think this goes to support the data when we're really looking at and making database decisions. These instructional rounds are very, very specific to what the school needs at that time. So, depending on what the school needs, we then go through the classrooms, give them feedback, and admin teams from the schools can make decisions right then and there to make changes for instructional or behavior. So, it's great feedback. These are the 60 new staff members that we welcomed to Isle of White County Schools. They come from all different walks of life and all different kinds of experiences, and we are welcome, we welcome them. We held, you can see our beautiful new central office space where we fit all of them in there. We gave them a tour of the county. They got to see the Windsor side, the Smithfield side. And really, we looked at what do they need to know to be successful for that first month of school? And I do want you to focus about mentor-mentee meetings, because I know this was a question Chair Marsh. We, because we know that our new teachers are coming from all different experiences, we pair them up with a mentor veteran teacher who also got training at the beginning of the year as well. We will continue into our second year. So, again, those, out of the 60, 44 are falling, falling into less than three years' experience. So, last year, we started the new teacher cohort. This is in the St. Luke's Community Room. They come in person from 8:30 to 3:30, and myself, along with coaches and coordinators, provide them with high-quality professional development that will get them really through the month of what's going on currently. And this was our cohort from last year, and they got their Certificate of Completion, and many of them stayed with us, and we're very excited to have them again for Year 2. Questions?
Questions from the board? Thanks, Ms. Tree, you answered my question that I'd asked.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Berry? Oh, sorry, jumped a gun. It's Mrs. Getz.
Okay. Before you, you have the annual fundraising report. This is just information. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take those. Questions?
Lots of busy people.
Yes, busy people, exactly. And there's study coming in already.
Questions, comments?
Questions.
I don't have any of this stuff.
Thanks, Ms. Getz.
Okay, thank you.
Now, Ms. Berry.
Good evening. Whoops, where'd that go? Thank you. I thought I would start the financial reports this month on the fiscal year '25 and year-end results. I think you all are aware, but also for any of our listening audience to see how we ended in the black by about $2.2 million. As you see with the revenue, we actually received over almost $250,000 over what we had budgeted, and these funds will be returned to the county once the audit is complete. The additional funds came from the E-Rate Program, which I think I had mentioned to you previously. That's where we get discounts on our telecommunications and high-speed internet between the schools and so forth. We also received more from our Medicaid Recovery Program, thanks to Mrs. Pulley. And we received a little bit more in sales tax than originally anticipated. Expenses came under budget by $1.97 million. This was pretty much solely due to staff vacancies. And if you will recall, our health insurance claims, as well as the cost of these claims, increased significantly in fiscal year '25. As comparison year to, year over year, it increased about 33%. So, we started the year with health fund reserves of about $1.3 million, and because of those increased costs, we nearly depleted all of our reserves. So, with this excess or funds remaining in expenses, we have transferred that to the health fund reserve, bringing the reserves now up to about $2.23 million, which is right the recommended reserve level for a plan our size that is recommended. Please note, these are, these results are currently unaudited. The audit will begin the first week of November. So, and if anything changes, certainly draft, just really, you know, I'll let you know.
Since you're talking about healthcare, can you give us a little update on what we're doing moving forward as far as exploring alternative options?
I have been in communication with our consultant as late as today, and we, they will be preparing an RFP on our behalf. We'll be posting it and issuing it, but we will be exploring, you know, similar plans like we have right now, which are self-insured plans, and then we will also be looking at fully insured plans. The problem we have is that the, the cycle, the timing of when the bids can come out and when health insurance companies will make, you know, any recommended plan pricing is not going to be, we probably won't get those back until late February. So, we should get some preliminary renewal rates in December, early part of January. So, the '27 budget will be prepared based on, you know, a similar plan and those renewals. And then, of course, you know, we'll bring you the results of what we find out from the RFP as soon as possible. But, of course, I'm familiar with the deadlines for, for the budget, and, you know, we'll work around that.
So, ma'am, and Dr. Kramer, just, and my colleagues up here, I get reminded probably weekly by Supervisors Roundtree and DiStefano that they are anxious to entertain that discussion and help the school division find alternatives. So, I feel confident that that question will come up next month when we're in a joint work session, so.
It's already in the works.
Everything you just said is good talking points to bring.
It's already in the works.
I have no doubt. Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions with regard to fiscal year '25? Okay, on to '26.
Before you, before you move on, if there are no other questions, I'd like to take a moment. I don't want to gloss over this 2025 financial update. I think this is the healthiest by far we have been in the last three years, at least since I've been here. And I think that this warrants a bit more attention than I think we're giving it. And I want to acknowledge our entire staff, my colleagues at Central Office, and I'd like to acknowledge the work of Ms. Berry and her staff to end this year with a $2.2 million surplus and to be able to shore up our health fund. I think we started the year with $1.3 million approximately in reserves. Now, because of where we are being very fiscally prudent, we are going to be able to shore that up, and for the first time, I think, since I've been here as well, have what's been recommended, and that is over $2 million in reserve. So, again, I, I think it's important that we take a moment, and it's okay, I think, for us to pat ourselves on the back and celebrate where we are and to acknowledge the work that many people have done to get us to this point. So, I wanted to say that, if that's okay.
It's, it's well, well said, Dr. Kramer. I, I think I alluded to it a bit earlier, and as we move forward with the budget discussions, and then we've got the compensation study going on, you know, I, just using big round numbers, we, $2 million surplus this year by far and large because of unfilled positions. I think it's reasonable, reasonable to expect something similar coming this year, assuming nothing catastrophic comes up. I think it's going to make the conversations easier when we get the results of the compensation study, and we start making those hard decisions on what we need to do and where we need to put the money. So, certainly a welcomed number to see up on the board. I would echo Dr. Kramer's sentiment. Thank you.
And speaking of the compensation study, I also just wanted to let you know that that's underway. The data was provided to this consultant earlier this week. Mrs. Sullivan and I had a Zoom meeting with them today. The market survey on the salaries will begin next week, and then later this month, 1st of October, they will start a job performance review where staff will be able to give some input on their own job descriptions and where some changes may need to be made. So, they'll get to put some input in. Now, we won't be doing that with the teacher job descriptions, but for the rest of, of the staff, that's part of this, this study.
I don't want to put the cart before, before the horse, but I, I think that's important. I mean, I've personally heard it nauseam since I've been on this board that Central Office is overstaffed and overpaid. And after sitting up here and watching you folks do what you do for nearly three years, I do not share that opinion. I think by far and large, every one of you do wear multiple hats all the time. So, I think it's incumbent for you all to advocate for yourselves and do not hesitate to put down everything you do with your job descriptions. I, I don't know how it is in other school divisions, but that's what we look to find out.
Well, this includes all support staff, you know, not just administration.
That's the, that's the general stereotype that gets thrown out there, so. You're right, there's a lot of support staff that aren't necessarily in a classroom behind a chalkboard.
I don't believe the district's been through a compensation study for close to 20 years. I think it was 2006.
Since this division?
Yes.
I, I think, again, I don't want to put the cart before the horse, but sooner, the sooner we can figure out what the number is, the target of what we need to start looking at, and we can see what we've got to work with, those conversations need to start happening early and often with our friends at the county, so. Leave it at that.
And we expect to have a draft report like November, December, so we know what we'll be working with in preparing, you know, the preliminary budget for you.
Good. That's sooner than I expected, actually.
So, on to '26, the current fiscal year, there's, I'm happy to say there's nothing out of the ordinary to report. You will note on the grant fund report, I am showing there's, I'm estimating there's about a $350,000 carryover from unused grants from, you know, this year that rolls into, or from '25 that rolls into '26. I also want to note that we still have not heard about our Title Grant Awards, so Title 1, 2, 3, and 4. Title, and, and they all total probably about $1 million. Title 1 and Title 2 do support paying teachers, staff. So, we'll have to take that into consideration too as we, you know, the, the months progress here. But with those being federal grants, I would think we would know shortly since federal year starts October 1st. So, we have that to, you know, be monitoring as well.
One thing that caught my attention, and I appreciate, I'm assuming you added the screenshot of the, you have to excuse me, I'm getting tired and drawing blanks here, our, our $250,000 capital pot of money that we have, it caught my attention that of the 250K, we've already expended or encumbered all but $23,000. And I do see that you're requesting some reimbursements. I would assume the welding is from INTA you're going to try to get that back from?
No, these, and Dr. Coleman and his staff prepared this. I believe this first one on the, the welding, these are filters that we purchased, but they really should be coming from, out of a CTE budget.
Got it.
So, it's just, so there'll be more money in there once we just do some accounting reclasses.
Even if those asterisks were pulled out of it, we've still spent 200 of $250,000, so that doesn't leave us much to play with for unexpected capital, so.
Correct.
And we're September.
Yeah, that, that maintenance budget really needs to be a half a million. Or more.
Okay. I appreciate you answering those questions. For the sake of time, I won't cherry pick through the ones you've already answered. Anybody else?
Well, I'll just end with the annual school report was submitted to the state yesterday.
Outstanding.
Thank you.
Which is also huge, I want to acknowledge that.
Well, we relate that one year, right?
We, and most districts, you get it, what, a two-week extension usually from September 15th to usually.
15th, 30th.
September 30th. And we are already in prior to the 15th, so huge shout-out, kudos to you, Ms. Berry, and your team for being early. They, it's almost a standard where you get an extension. Yes, we were not only late one year, we were into the next year, calendar year, submitting it. So, just again, I can't say enough about the work that our finance folk are doing, so quite impressive.
And you, everything's working good with the county? I know they had a little staffing changes over there. Everything's good?
Yes, I actually attended an Audit Committee meeting this past Monday out there and met their new Finance Director, CFO.
Good.
Yes.
Good to hear. Thank you, ma'am. UK is good, you all want to take five? Five? Doc, we're going to take a real quick five-minute recess. All right, we're back in session.
Mr. Chairman, school board members, the operations update. Just scroll that very quickly. We have Mr. Brinkley and Mr. Feig for the transportation update for the first two weeks and security emergency management update for the first two weeks. Mr. Feig?
All righty. Good evening once again. So I have a couple of points I'm going to make. So I'll kind of plow through those points. Feel free to interject if you have any questions, and I'll entertain whatever questions you have at the end. So I don't want to miss this opportunity. I want to start it off, we're talking about the start of the school year. So I was just telling Dr. Coleman a few moments ago, but he already knows. But I just want to say it publicly and make sure everybody's aware of it. We are in the best position we've been in with our Fleet Services Department in years. We really are. It's been so quiet the last two weeks on that front. So kudos to Mr. Sullivan and his staff. It really has been absolutely incredible. The work that they did over the summer to end the school year, we didn't have like a, you know, a back lot of broken buses sitting all over the place. We kept going through the end of the year. As a matter of fact, he got every single bus going on the first day of school except for one school bus. We'd been waiting on a part for about six months. We probably never will, really will find that part, but we're still waiting on it because they don't manufacture it anymore. So he's done a tremendous job getting us ready for school this year. So just kind of an overview of our operation. I know the board members, Dr. Kramer, you guys are aware of all this. So our operation is growing. And certainly, you know, we look at the things we put in place with Fleet Services and with our personnel. We're hiring bus drivers. We did have some pretty good gains over the summer. A couple of our new hires didn't work out. And even we heard earlier in the meeting about some of the bus changes and so forth. So, and I can address those kind of speed bumps, I guess, from the very get-go. In the last nine or 10 days, we've actually had three staff members that are out for very valid reasons. And I'll leave it at that point. You know, you don't plan on those things, but they happen. We're human beings. You know, we work with people, and these things come up sometimes. But I have to say, our drivers do a really phenomenal job of scooping it up, and they know what needs to be done. And, you know, you don't even have to tell them twice. You don't even have to hardly tell them once. They go and do it, and they really kind of get us through. So for this school year, we're looking at, we have a total of 106 school bus routes. That's in the morning, and that's in the afternoon as well. So think about these numbers, all these routes. On average, we transport about 3,200, 3,300 students a day. So that's about 55, 60% of our student count. So those numbers are very, very high. So in addition to the 75 school buses we run, we have eight cars and vans. So they run specialized routes out of the county. I'll talk about that in a moment. Some special education routes and some Kenny Vento routes as well. And our service, a lot of people don't realize it extends well beyond Islewhite County. There's a tremendous amount of things that we do within the county, but we actually service, we have special education programs in Southampton, two programs in Suffolk. We have the Governor's School. You heard that earlier in the meeting. So every day, we send a school bus over to Hampton. Every afternoon, we send one over to Norfolk, and that school bus doesn't get back to about 6 o'clock. We have Plan B. We have Rivermont. Honestly, the average school day, we have buses on the road for probably 15, 16 hours. Just a little bit ago, I was checking on our field trip bus. It's coming back from Pecoson right now. Must be a volleyball game or something like that. So literally, these things happen, and we're always on when the buses are on the road. Couple Fridays ago, Mr. Sullivan and I had to go chase a bus up to, where was that, Dr. Coleman? That was up by Gloucester, I believe.
Somewhere near.
Yeah, football bus. So like, a breakdown happened, you know, on a Friday night, and off we go. So really, just kind of the size of our operation, everything that it involves. So like I said, it is growing, but certainly, we have a lot of things in place to help us with it. So an update on the MyView, my next point. So as you recall, we launched this at the end of the school year. It was a success at Carsville. So we are continuing the pilot for this year. This week, it has relaunched at Carsville. It is all set up. So I sent all the information to Ms. Outland. She pushed it out. I got a question through my email today, so I know people are latching on to it again. It is coming soon. We're going to expand that pilot. It'll be coming to West Side by the end of the month. I'm going to reach out to the principal, Mr. Johnson, about that very, very soon. So anybody that's watching, listening, it's going to be coming to West Side as well. And our intention is to expand that to the whole division later this school year. So we're doing it piece by piece. The West Side piece is going to be a considerably big piece. So we want to make sure we have that straight. Really, it's just, it kind of speaks to our mission for providing reassurance for parents about the bus. Where is the bus? When's the bus coming? My child's on that bus. Where is it? When will it be here? All that sort of stuff. So certainly, it's moving us towards that. And then the last point, so like I said, I talked about the size of our operation. So really, I just, I want to say publicly to the board, Dr. Kramer, anybody that's listening at home, we appreciate everyone's patience. The three weeks, two, three weeks before the school year starts, and then the first three weeks of the year are the longest weeks of the school year. All right, it's tough. The days are long. Myself, my office staff, Ms. Tracy in the office, my two technicians, Blake and Adina, we work nights, weekends, and we do it like constantly. So we work nonstop. So we work tirelessly to get things in place. And, you know, we try for, we try to be perfect, right? I was telling the school administrator that earlier this week. We try to be perfect. We're not perfect, but we try to be, and we work as hard as we can to try to make it perfect. So just putting things in place. And I know it's frustrating. You're out there, and where's the bus? The sheet said it's supposed to be here at 7:52, and here it is, 10 after 8. And, you know, we're dealing with such a large operation. There are so many variables. There are so many parts. We rely on people. We rely on equipment. We rely on, you know, factors we can't control, like the weather and the traffic. And we had that really bad accident. I think it was the first or second day of the school year, last week in the afternoon. So we have all this stuff. So we have to kind of, you know, we have to do our best, and we have to juggle. We have to move things on the fly. But I'll kind of close with reminding everybody, so we have a very, very small staff at Transportation. So there are three people down there to answer the phones, answer the emails, answer the voicemails. We get multiple of those a day. I'm handling all the administrative stuff. And there are some days I'm only in my office for maybe 30 minutes because I'm on the run. I'm doing things. Yesterday, I was driving a field trip, for example, in the afternoon. And I had folks calling me, you know, calling my office. They texted my cell phone and everything, and I got back to them. So we really appreciate everybody's patience. So we have a pretty good system in place to manage all those. But I know people, they get a little bit upset when they call three or four times in a row, and they get the voicemail machine, you know. So we tell people all the time, leave the voicemail. We will get back to you. We will get it. It goes straight to our email. So certainly, I would say where we are, where we were two years ago when I came in, I sat in this chair, and I remembered some of those questions, some of the comments, some of the, you know, the interested stakeholders that spoke and everything like that. We're making a lot of progress. We really are. We're not there yet, but we are making a lot of progress. So I'll close with that, and I'll open it up for any questions you may have.
Mr. Feig, I don't have any questions for you. I just want to let you know, I have not received a single complaint this school year about buses arriving late or anything of that nature. So I think everything must be going well.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Hear, hear. Took the words about it out of my mouth. I think the last couple of years, this time in the school year, I had parents burning the phone up, getting ready to read us to riot acts. So whatever you're doing, kudos to you. That said, I'd ask you to recall what Dr. Kramer said during convocation. You got to take care of yourself. You don't want a bald spot like me.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Appreciate you. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Brinkley?
Good evening again. Just want to kind of fill you in and give you the updates of where we're at so far this school year. And we've been over a lot of it already. You heard Cole and Cameron speaking on the weapons detection and how we have had some minor hiccups just with some of the newer students learning that process and getting through. And what we are seeing is, in that process, some of the, some of the upperclassmen, like, kind of doing our jobs for us in a way, because they're telling the other students what to do, and they're guiding and directing them. But I have to, have to give a huge shout out to the staff at Smithfield High School and Windsor High School for the work that they're doing at Arrival with the weapons detection systems. They have put a lot of time and effort into this and reworking plans so that we can, so that we can get those teachers away from being the ones searching the bags. And so they've done a lot of work in helping with that. So we do have those up and running at both high schools. That is going well. We have completed all of the crisis management plans and revisions, which I think are on the agenda for next month for, to be presented to you all. And we had two SSOs at Smithfield High School that returned this year, and they're obviously playing a very active role in everything going on at Smithfield. And we hired a new SSO for Windsor High School. In fact, I think he did his onboarding the day of convocation and then came to convocation. And starting right then, he immediately fit in and started building those working relationships with the staff. And so far, that's really working out well, and the relationships that he's building with the staff as well as the students. So I will, I will mimic some of the things that Mr. Feig said in that I am very excited about where we're headed. I'm excited about a lot of the things that are happening and some of the decisions that have been made. And I will also mimic the fact that those first, these last three weeks and those first two weeks of school are by far the longest weeks. There's some, there's some late nights and early mornings dealing with everything, but I'm very excited about the direction that we're going and the things that we're accomplishing.
Football, weapons detection devices, are you guys moving those around to?
We've started, yes. We have started that, and we are working on that as far as the SSOs working those for after-hour events and getting, getting those out to the games as well.
Good.
I'm just going to piggyback on that question. If you're, if you utilize the weapons detection systems, you know, for game nights or whatever, as far as battery life, what are you noticing on that? How are they holding up?
So even the, even the units that we're running throughout the day, we're finding that we're not having to recharge the batteries at the end of the day. A lot of times, we'll swap them out with the detectors that we're, that we're not running all day. And, but the battery life, we're typically getting two full days of running the systems out of the, out of the batteries.
On one charge?
Mm-hmm.
That is impressive. So, yeah, I was just, I was just curious.
Obviously, the, obviously, the SSOs at each location, that's one of their, one of their responsibilities is to, is to check that battery life. And we tend to go ahead and recharge them, even if they're, even if they're not all the way low, just to make sure we don't run into any issues with, with losing the battery life on these.
Right. I know eventually, we'll have to replace batteries. I was just curious how long they were lasting right now.
Yep. It's usually about two days.
Thank you.
All right, no introduction there tonight from you, Mr. Chair.
Over to you, Dr. Kramer.
There we go.
We're getting tired.
Well, no, no problem. I appreciate that.
Apologize.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. No problem. So didn't want to be presumptuous. Good evening, everyone, as Mr. Elliott, our co-writer, pulls up the PowerPoint there. So as you all know, this is the first board meeting since school started Tuesday, September 2nd. So this is, in essence, really kind of the first seemingly real board meeting of the year, given that we have students and staff who are now back with us. So let's start with our, I think we're, go back a few slides here. Let's start with the, I'm not sure what order we have here. We're a little bit mixed up. I'll tell you what, we're going to get through this, Mr. Co-writer. Let's start with the annual convocation. There we go. All right. So we started with our annual convocation, and a few of you have referenced that this evening. We brought together over 700 staff members to celebrate the start of the 2025-26 2025-26 school year at Smithfield High School's auditorium, and virtually everyone who works for Isla White, for those of you who are listening, they were invited to be a part of that awesome event. Uh, the event was filled with excitement, energy, and inspiration as we honored award recipients, celebrated achievements, and looked ahead to another incredible year. And despite all the fun, let's be clear, it's not all fun and activities. I do spend a significant amount of time discussing the state of the school division and what our focus needs to be for the upcoming year. Uh, so thank you all for making this year's convocation a success and making it, uh, so enjoyable, and appreciate your reference earlier, Mr. Chair. It shows that somebody's listening when you reference. One of the things I think I ended with, and that is staff making sure that you take care of yourself, because if you're not taking care of yourselves, can't take care of our children. So I appreciate you referencing that. And, uh, do look at some of the costumes here. Uh, we had our annual competition, uh, between schools, and I think Hardy, help me, Ms. Getz, Hardy Elementary won this year. And I did tweet out, uh, some other photos as well with, uh, board members and I, uh, the cowboy boots and the cowboy hats, and that was a theme as well. So again, lots of fun, and almost all of you attended. I think one of you had a prior commitment, but everybody else was there, and, uh, great way to launch the school year. Now, if we can go, and I know we're kind of in different orders here, Mr. Coopwriter, so let's go to first week of school. Uh, so, there we go, sir. Thank you. As you will see from the photos here, we had a successful and fairly uneventful first week of school, which is exactly what we want, absolutely. I was able to get out to all nine schools on the first day, and, uh, I can tell you that our teachers, administrators, and staff members were well prepared for our students' return. And I want to thank all of you for being out as well. I know many of you were at different sites, I think I missed some of you, but, uh, was with, uh, board member Cunningham and Perkins. We were at Smithfield High School and Smithfield Middle. Um, and as you see from the smiling faces there, students are learning basically on day one, and events are well underway, and as we heard from our student liaisons, uh, the athletic events are in full swing, and we are doing well. So school is well underway, and that's a great thing. Uh, let's now go to the IMTA ribbon cutting ceremony. There we are. So as you see from the photo, we had the opportunity, uh, to participate in the ribbon cutting ceremony at the newly renovated and recently opened Isle Maritime Trades Academy, uh, with officials from Paul D. Camp, uh, Community College, Old Dominion University, and certainly members of our school board, and I think you see there, uh, Ms. Perkins and Chair Marsh is tucked in the back somewhere there, and Mr. Colick is on the front inspecting the scissors, scissors cutting there. Um, and then I think we have some students, not unfortunately in this photo, but we have some of our students who are represented in another photo. And remember that the IMTA is a partnership between Isle White County Schools, Camp Community College, Newport New Shipbuilding, Huntington Ingalls, and Old Dominion University. Uh, also, it's important to note that this new academy will give up to eighty juniors and seniors the chance to earn a high school diploma, an associate's degree, and industry credentials in shipbuilding trades like welding and electrical, so we're very excited about that. And, uh, also coming up, pretty soon, we're going to have, uh, a guest, uh, if everything works out, we may have our governor visiting the Isle Maritime Trades Academy. So know how busy, uh, his schedule is, so if there are no cancellations, we'll be sharing a little bit more, uh, with you about that in the coming weeks. Next, if you can go to the ribbon cutting ceremonies for our new tracks, fields, and tennis courts at both high schools. There we have it. Okay, so we were able to celebrate the ribbon cutting ceremonies for the newly upgraded athletic facilities at Windsor High School on September 4th, and at Smithfield High School on September 8th, uh, just this past week. The ribbon cutting ceremonies, uh, gave us a chance to formally thank all who made these upgraded facilities possible, starting with members of our school board. So I thank all of you, uh, gentlemen and lady, uh, for making these upgrades a priority, and thanks to the County Board of Supervisors for their support and for providing the funding, uh, for these upgrades. And a special thank you as well to the Opacy Foundation for funding the repairs and upgrades to the Smith, I'm sorry, to the Windsor High tennis courts. And as you see there, uh, some of the guest speakers, Mr. Colick, uh, brought greetings at Smithfield, Chair Marsh brought greetings at Windsor, and we have Mr. Cole Munford, our student liaison, also bringing greetings, and you see, uh, our tennis courts, tracks, and fields. Uh, very proud of that, and again, I extend a heartfelt thank you to each of you board members and to the supervisors for making that possible. Absolutely.
Just for whatever it's worth to you, I got a, I got a phone call night before last from a gentleman, uh, retired, out of the blue. Uh, first I thought I was going to get laid into, and he goes, "Hey, Marsh, how much did that track cost over at Windsor?" And I divulged as much as I could from my memory, and he goes, "Man, it looks good. I sure appreciate you guys getting that done." So I, I share that because it's not just the school division, the community benefits from those facilities as well, so.
Absolutely. Thank you. That's a great point. That's right. This is not just a win for our school division, this is for the entire community, no question about it. So we should all take pride in this. And now, uh, sharpening skills for a new school year slide. So this summer, over twenty-five members of our IWCS Child Nutrition Team participated in the Summer Manager Workshops and Culinary Workshops for Frontline Cafeteria Staff, hosted in partnership with the Virginia Department of Education School Nutrition Program and the Culinary Institute of America. Uh, and over the two days of hands-on learning, our staff trained in scratch and speed-scratch cooking techniques, reading and following standardized recipes, knife skills, using herbs and spices to reduce sodium. Mr. Wooster, in other words, less salt, sir. I think you can appreciate that. Uh, strategies for lowering added sugars in our students' meals, and preparing fresh, nutritious meals that reflect the cultures and taste of our students. So huge kudos and thank you to our food service workers and all the work that they're doing to ensure that our students have nutritious meals every day. And a shout out to, uh, Mrs. Couch and to Mrs. Williams, uh, who are leading that area as well. Uh, next we have State of the County Event. Uh, I had the privilege of attending the State of the County Event that was sponsored by the Isla White Chamber of Commerce on Monday, September 8th, at the Smithfield Center. Um, if that was not up there, don't worry about it. I think we somehow, I don't know if I went in and did some things late and didn't get that to you, so I apologize for that, Mr. Coopwriter and Mr. Elliott. Nonetheless, uh, Mayor Smith of the town of Smithfield, Mayor Stubbs of the town of Windsor, and Chairman of the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Rosie, all presented on their respective areas. Uh, it was great hearing all the exciting initiatives that are occurring in Isla White. Uh, so thank you to all that you gentlemen are doing in our community, and thank you for allowing us to be a part of that initiative. And last, and too bad we don't have this up there, but, uh, we had an image for the county fair. Uh, I think one of you alluded to this earlier. As most of you know, we have the Isla White County Fair, which starts this evening, uh, September 11th, and it runs through Sunday, September 14th. Uh, Isla White first graders, first grade students in the division will attend the county fair from ten o'clock AM to two o'clock PM tomorrow, Friday, September 12th. And during the visit, students will enjoy carnival rides, interact with the animals and live performances at the Barton Ford Stage. Additionally, the Smithfield High Band will be performing between the hours of ten and ten forty-five AM, and the Windsor High Band will be performing between the hours of eleven to eleven forty-five AM. As part of the fair festivities, each participating school has also created a themed hay bale display celebrating this year's fair theme, which is, "There's No Time Like Fair Time." Um, and I think, help me, uh, Ms. Getz, um, our agricultural land lab students are usually there as well. Didn't want to neglect mentioning them, so they will be there throughout the week as well. So our students and staff will be well represented, and we also, I won't mention all the staff members' names, but we'll have staff members who will be at a booth, uh, sharing information from our county as well. So we will be well represented throughout the week at the fair, and, uh, I look forward to being there in the morning and partaking as well. And I, hopefully I'll get a chance to see some of you good folk there if your schedules permit. Uh, with that, Mr. Chair and members of the board, that completes my superintendent's update.
Any comments? Doc, for whatever it's worth, seems to me like you've got a well-oiled machine going your way. Last couple of years haven't been so smooth. Even my boss, my wife, said everything seems to be going pretty well, so kudos to you and the team, sir.
Well, we got the real boss to give us that kudo, Mrs. Marsh, then that matters. So thank you very much.
She certainly runs my house. Okay, that takes us on to personnel report, action item.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the personnel report as presented, a copy of which can be obtained from the school board clerk.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing non, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Colick?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mrs. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Wooster?
Yes.
And Mr. Marsh?
Yes. Motion passes. And Mr. Wooster, I understand you're going to lump some of these together?
Uh, that is my intention, yes. Mr. Chair, I move to grant the exemption from compulsory attendance for student REX two-six-zero-three.
Two-five.
Two-five, two-six.
Hang on. Now I got my glasses on. REX two-five-two-six dash zero-three, REX two-five-two-six dash zero-four, REX two-five-two-six dash zero-five, and REX two-five-two-six dash zero-six.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Colick?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mrs. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Wooster?
Yes.
And Mr. Marsh?
Yes. Motion passes. Back to you, sir.
Mr. Chair, I move to uphold the superintendent's recommendation for student matter SEP dash two-zero-two-six.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Colick?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mrs. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Wooster?
Yes.
And Mr. Marsh?
Yes. That takes us to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as attached and presented.
Second.
A motion and a second, and friends, I would ask that you divulge me for a second. There are a lot of donations on September's donation, uh, memo, but there's one in particular I want to draw attention to. And as a representative for District Four Windsor, it's been brought to my attention numerous times that Windsor does not have a Smithfield Foods. So it's not very common that Windsor gets a new thirty thousand dollar scoreboard like Smithfield High does. So this month, the Peanut Soil and Water Conservation District donated forty thousand dollars to Windsor High for a new greenhouse from Rimmel. So I just-
Nice.
That's, that's an awesome donation and a huge contribution to the Windsor High School. Sir, please.
Yes, and I appreciate you acknowledging that. Dr. Coleman had to leave, unfortunately, um, but wanted to note that we will be acknowledging them, um, at a, at an upcoming event, so didn't want anyone to think that we weren't, uh, aware of that and weren't going to, uh, acknowledge that at the level it should be. So we will be providing more information to the board as we acknowledge that at, at an upcoming event in the very near future.
Thank you, Doctor. Any other comments? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Colick?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mrs. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Wooster?
Yes.
And Mr. Marsh?
Yes. Motion passes. Uh, let's see here. And then we've got policies for first read. This way, though, this is listed as an action item, but I think this is just an info for first read.
Should be info.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. It's just information.
That's okay.
I will correct that.
And Mrs. Briggs left because she's a little under the weather, but there's roughly fifty-some odd policies up there for first read.
Sixty.
It's a lot, that's for sure.
Sixty-nine.
Yeah. Um, I did spend a significant amount of my weekend going through each and every one of these, and I'll spare the board all the questions. I will say that between Mrs. Briggs and the other staff, they answered all of my questions. Most of it was just me trying to get a better understanding, and for the sake of time, I'll certainly share that all with you individually and appropriately. Just from where I'm sitting, there was nothing that really jumped out at me. There's one, uh, there was F policy, F E A. I had asked her to add the new regulation, F B R, which is the one we use to, uh, kind of help shape the goals and vision of the division. E E B C was, was a new policy based off new legislation, and that was opioid antagonists. Um, I asked what that was and who administers it and who has the training, and the short answer was the SROs or the authorized administers currently, and the school nurses are due to receive the same training on the twenty-second, that's what she said, by our partner, Western And then there's one in there that talks about, um, alcohol, there's, there's a policy, G D Q, that talks about, um, submitting for alcohol and controlled substances testing. And I asked a question, why does that only apply to bus drivers? I understand why it applies to bus drivers, and the response I got was they're currently working on a regulation that would expand that to all employees. That was, for me, that was a welcomed response. I don't see how bus drivers should just be singled out. The other stuff was administrative for the most part.
Mr. Marsh?
Ms. Getz, what am I missing here?
Yeah, I'll, well, I'll just add on that policy. If there is a suspicion of alcohol or drug use in employees, we can require them to be tested. So it's not going to be the random testing like the bus drivers.
Right. Any other comments from the board? Okay, I guess we'll move along. Second read policies. It's action item.
Mr. Chair, after reviewing the policies for second read, I would like to pull, remove policy K G D for future review or future review and possible updates. The rest of those policies I am currently fine with.
Is that a motion?
I can make it a motion.
I don't think you need to. I think you can motion and do anything except that. That sounds fine. I think, and Mrs. Getz, you keep me honest here, I think K G B, because this was up for first read last month, you weren't here, I think that's based off new legislation.
I'm sorry, I don't have this in the packet. What is, can you tell me what, which one?
It's School Connected Student Overdose Notification and Privacy Policy.
Yes, that is, that is based on legislation. That, is it the 24-hour, we have to notify in 24 hours? That is legislation.
Correct. And that's already, it's required by law as of July 1st.
That is correct.
Right, I'm, I'm not questioning that aspect. I'm actually looking at possibly adding to it just a little bit to tweak it.
Can I suggest that we approve it and then?
Yes.
Get it in place, and if we want to amend it, you wanna vet it through the committee, then we'll just throw it back on next month for another first read?
I'm good with that.
Yeah. I think we should go ahead and get it in place.
Um, most of the policies, don't we usually have what it, what law or whatever it addresses at the bottom of the policy so people can reference it? Am I missing? If this is new legislation, should we have, what piece of legislation should be attached to this policy?
Yeah.
Why we're requiring it, where it's coming from?
The, the bill number, actually.
Yeah.
Is that what you're referring to?
Typically, if it is...
It's just not on this, so maybe we need to add that.
It's not on that one? Okay.
I'm not seeing it on here, so if it...
Mr. Chair, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
If we didn't pass this, if we didn't have this policy in place, don't put it in place tonight, we're still legally obligated to follow this.
We are.
Correct. So I think we're, we're talking semantics. I understand what Mr. Wooster, you know, wants to do. I definitely don't disagree with it, because I think there's a few things that should be tweaked. And the, the first thing I see is, you know, the definition of overdose. Okay, that's really not 100% accurate. You know, you can, it, it says consumption or use of a controlled substance. Well, you can overdose on Tylenol, you know? So I, so I think tweaking a little bit like that.
I believe that is the part from the code, Mr. Colick, but we can go back and double-check on that.
So what's the consensus here? Do we wanna bless it and, and throw it back for first read for review?
We could do that.
It honestly doesn't matter to me, but I do think we need to review it.
Okay, so then I would, I would, be my, my wish to go ahead and approve it and then roll it right into the committee for further review. That way, it's in place.
Yeah, that, that's fine by me.
Certainly look at adding the cross-references.
Yeah, we need to add that. I see where you're saying this, Perkins.
And she did that last month, so she did that, I think she did it before she had her, her model policies, so.
Probably.
She probably pulled it from scratch. Dr. Kramer, anything you wanna add to that?
No, it's a board's preference, so if you were, my recommendation would be to move forward with this and make the adjustments later as you recommend it, but certainly we would move with whatever your, your preferences.
Yeah, I agree with that. Okay. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve policies for second read as presented.
Second.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Colick?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mrs. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Wooster?
Yes.
And Mr. Marsh?
Yes, motion passes. And Mrs. Getz, are you gonna send that to Mrs. Briggs? Thank you, ma'am. Woo-hoo, we're there, peoples. Board member comments, who wants to go first? Go for it, Mr. Colick.
Okay, so since the last meeting, I attended the IMTA ribbon cutting ceremony as Dr. Kramer showed the convocation, and I was able to take a tour of Carzville Elementary School to see the renovations and the updates that were done. Very nice. And I've gotta say, I have never seen Carzville Elementary as clean and as bright and as full of energy as I did then. And I think that's a testament to Mrs. Outland and her leadership and all the staff there. They do a wonderful job.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wooster?
Um, I really don't have much. I will be at the fair tomorrow, 'cause I can't wait to see the band playing. And if I run into anybody, you know, hope to see you there if you are there.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Perkins?
See you there.
Mr. Cunningham?
Oh, okay. I was at a convocation, ribbon cutting for, at Windsor High School, Smithfield High School. Attended the first day at Smithfield High, Smithfield Middle, Hardy Elementary. And I will be at the fair also tomorrow, and it looks like I'm gonna be there at 9:30. I was thinking it was 10, but I'm gonna get there early so I don't miss anything. Other than that, hey, I wanna thank the staff for everything they've done to make this first, or the first week, actually, that was last week, wasn't it? Yeah, this is the second week, a success. I mean, all the kids love it. It, well, maybe not going back to school, but they seem happy. They have smiles on their faces, and, and they're safe, and that's the most important thing. So, thank you.
All ahead. Okay, and no sense in repeating everything. Ribbon, ribbon cutting, all that good stuff. Yeah, it's been busy. Appreciate everybody. It's late, good night, meetings adjourned.